Good, good. Is this uh your Zoom account?
No, this is Scotty's.
Oh, cool.
And he's already recording, so. Let me show you what I'm looking at. So I'm already looking at the um. Under it's six max under the gun. Um versus button.
Okay.
So globally, we check seventy-two percent. Which is a lot, and you see, once it goes. Once the board starts getting lower, we check more and more.
Yeah, we just check a lot more than, well, in theory, we check a lot more. What people do in reality.
It looks like it's, we get to bet on. Two Broadway boards. That's really like, the K- at King High, we get to bet a lot.
Yeah, King High is the exception. I think other than that, we. We're gonna check a lot. I think then weird things happen. I think if it's like two, three or.
Ace, ace high paired, ace high paired boards and ace king boards. And King High boards. Once you get the Queen High, we start checking more and more. And under ten high, we check a lot. But I did notice something that. If we change this to connected boards. Our checking frequency globally is eighty-seven percent. And the only exception is a connected board ace, ace higher King High. Pretty much, we almost check range the rest of the way down.
What happens if it is? If you make, if you filter for bottom, for middle and bottom card being twos? Since twos, I'm curious what happens since twos miss people's ranges. You can go to Filthy Eric there. And we'll make middle card two as well, and then that'll.
Again, it looks like aces and kings we bet. Queens, we bet some, jacks, we bet some, but once it gets below ten, we're doing more checking. But then when we get to this part, when we do bet, we're betting large. Like this is over bet. These are over bets. These are over bets. Oh, these are paired two boards. Let me go back to this. Paired two boards. Paired boards with a two.
We've looked just at paired two boards. So I think they have unique qualities.
Well, yeah, we're seeing them here.
Okay.
If it's under nine, if it's nine or under. So we got ten, two, two, ten, two, two. Nine, nine, any paired board with it too, it looks like. Not just paired twos, any paired board with it too. So let's. Filter two paired board. We have no check range, and when we do bet. Unless it's ace or king high, it looks like it, or. If it's nine high or lower, almost all the bets are over bets. When we do bet. Aces and King High still kind of mix. Aces to ten high still kind of mix. But once it's nine high and a paired board with a two. We over bet. Now, I also. Looked at, if we check. And. The mo- the most normal sizing the button will have is twenty-eight point two. Or I mean thirty-three percent. So if he bets thirty, wait, we check. He bets thirty-three percent. Our global check raising frequency is only about ten percent, eleven percent. And you can see here, across the board. We're doing a lot of calling and very little check raising.
Yeah. We just don't want to put a pot out of position.
Now, I also.
I mean, I think, I think it comes down to. Often, a solver will play a bit defensively when it's out of position.
Yeah. And these are two-tone boards. The sizing doesn't really go up. Like, a lot of people say, oh, two-tone boards, bet more. There have to be certain qualities. Oh, three high, let's. Let's do this filter real quick. Alright, so paired. If I hit three, we'll show threes and twos.
Uh, as the lowest card?
No.
Yeah, that's the lowest card it has. If you made middle card. Two, three, then it would show only two is the lowest card. So if you make middle card three, that'll do what I think you want.
Now, I wanted to see paired boards with threes and twos.
Or you want, oh, okay. Well, we probably have to look at them separately.
Paired boards. Just like with the twos, nine high. When we bet, it looks like a lot of our betting is large.
Yeah.
These are all over bets. Which seems con- counterintuitive, because you, I've always learned that small. Paired boards get bets small, smaller. And then there's another factor. If it goes check, check, we just do any random turn card. Um, on some turn cards, we will have over bets.
This is a check, check line on flop. And then we're looking at all cards, right?
Yeah. But it's based on this board. This, when you get to a turn report, it's based on the flop. It's not an aggregate turn report of every turn and every flop.
Yeah, gotcha.
So like if we change. Change the board to random. Like going to nine, five, three, we get a lot of over bets on the turn. After it goes check, check.
It'd be interesting to look at the extremes here. So if you made the flop two, 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 and then made it ace, 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 see what its difference is. I mean, sometimes we learn something from looking at the extremes.
I don't think we'll have over bets on a trip flop on the turn. A little bit, but not much. I mean, in total. Four percent.
Yeah. Hey, Matthew.
Hey, ho.
On trip twos, though, that's, it's different.
Yeah.
We get, we get a lot more over bets.
I mean, this is, it's. Pretty obvious, this is drawn, this is driven by cards that are good for our RFI rank.
Yeah.
It's even linear.
Except aces, aces, we go smaller. But kings through tens, nines, we tend to go large when we bet on the turn.
Hey, Mike. Hey, Skate.
Hello.
Alright, um, so it's about time to get started.
I don't know if there's a way to measure the psychic EV of the players yelling at you if you bet on an ace, ace, ace board because you ruined the jackpot.
The bad beat jackpot?
Hello.
Hello. Yes, this actually happened to me in a uh game last week. There was a, I'm doing air quotes, jackpot board, and the pre-flop aggressor made a bet, and everyone just lost their fucking minds.
So it's a board where you could hit a bad beat jackpot, and so people just wanted to check it down?
Board with two aces or three aces.
Even two aces, ooh, that's, that's uh, that's difficult.
They have to consider. The equity of the bad beat jackpot and whether they want to call the bet.
Right. But of course, the other players who aren't involved in the hand, they have unlimited EV from it checking down and no EV from two other people battling it out.
Oh, everybody gets paid at the table.
Okay, I guess is this where we'll officially start? And maybe Scotty can edit up to this point. Um, welcome to the Tuesday Cash Game Session for Poker Coaching. This Cash Game Session is um member-led. And today, we're going to look at out-of-position c-bets. Um, playing out-of-position post-flop. Um, the. What we have right now set up is under the gun, six max. Opening and getting called by the button, and we're going to study those spots for about an hour. Alright, so. The first thing you see when we have um. Let me clear. Is globally, out of position on the flop, we're checking seventy-two percent of the time. And when Larry and I were checking this out. We saw a couple things that.
Joey, that's your full range against all boards? We check seventy-some percent of the time?
Yes. That's globally, our whole range on every board possible.
And, and help me out, we, you said we are uh in the low jack and the three better. Is where?
No, there's no three bet. It's a single raise pot. We open under the gun and bit the button calls.
Okay, thank you.
Does it make sense to show the ranges real quick?
Um, yeah, we could show the range real quick. So this is our opening range. Um, in general, I don't. From under the gun, I don't hit these small pairs. But I will hit these suited connectors. And then the button's calling range. It has some mixing all the way across its range.
Yeah, so I think that um. I think that humans' flooding range in the button is going to be a lot wider than this.
Yes, it will.
Like if you, can you just hit the green, hit call, and it's just. Thank you. Yeah, I think a four percent of hands, I mean, I think probably population is like. Twice this, maybe ten percent, and raising a lot less.
Well, I think population is actually a bit even wider than that. I've seen some people calling with any Broadway. That will get these folded hands in there. Um, the suited aces, they'll play them all. Suited connectors, they'll play about a hundred percent. Pairs, they'll play a hundred percent.
I mean, and so obviously, that, that makes us question. The whole strap, because it's not the correct range versus range, but. I still think a lot of the first principles of how we play out of position makes sense to look at.
Yeah, we have to know what the GTO is first before we can decide whether we want to. Exploit from that.
So the one basic question I have is, okay, so we've established that. Population is going to have a far greater flooding range than what we're seeing in, in solver. And then we're, and then when we were looking at the aggregate report. We see that we're checking, uh, I think a seventy percent clip in this configuration. Now, I don't know, and I'm curious what you guys think. What's our adjustment when we know that button's RFI range is twice as big? As what we see in solver? I have no clue. Do we, do we check more, do we bet?
Bet more at a small frequency, I would think our uh range advantage would be higher, when that's the case.
Yeah, I think that, I think that makes sense, because they're going to have more trash, right? I mean, that's a super condensed range, so.
Like if we look, if we look at the table. Um. Our equity globally is pretty, running pretty close. This is pretty close to fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that's a good step to look at.
So if you make the imposition range weaker and wider. This might start bumping to like fifty-two, forty-eight, or maybe even better.
So then it falls, much like if this was a three bet pot. Well, that doesn't work as a good metaphor, good example, but it does fall that we should bet at a higher clip than what we see in solver. I think that makes sense. I think what Mike is right.
Yeah, and also what Larry and I were looking at before. We got started. Are paired boards with it too. Um, once the top card is like nine and lower. Our betting is over bets. It could be paired twos. Or a paired board with it too, like seven, seven, two, and seven, two, two. Most of our, most of our betting is over, over pot, one-twenty-five percent. And some other things we picked up on is. Ace. Paired ace boards, we get a lot of small betting. Ace, king boards, we get a lot of small betting. But once it goes ace, queen, and lower. Our checking increases a lot. Until we get to the King High boards. King High boards, we get a lot of betting. Except for the, like, the connected here. But once it, once it's queen high and lower, unless it's paired. We're going to start doing a lot of checking. And you see, as the, the card gets lower, we do more and more checking, the top card that is. Now, once the top card is a nine or lower. That's where large bets start creeping into our range.
It's very polarizing bets. Uh, Joey, one thing I'd like to look at, if it's okay. Um, can you sort? The report by checking frequency, so we can see what our highest bet boards are? So our highest bet boards are King low, low, King low, low.
King High boards.
Yeah.
And ace paired boards and ace king boards.
Now, okay, now what boards are?
On the other end. Our check range, our middle connected boards.
Yeah, that makes sense. So if there's one thing my little mind can take away from this is. King high, high, King, King High boards disconnected, we bet a lot, small. And these middle um connected boards, we check range.
Right, and I think, I just want to say this out loud, this is my understanding, so for others and also to check myself, I think the principle there is, you know, the ace-high boards. Aren't as good as you sometimes think for pre-flop raiser, because the pre-flop caller has a lot of aces, King High, King Rag boards are like. The quintessential great board for the pre-flop raiser. I, the, a- and the ten-low disconnected boards are, or the, sorry, the ten-low connected boards just nail your pre-flop caller, and they're terrible for you.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, if you looked, if you looked at the button range, uh, he's got a lot more ace X that he flats. In theory, than he does King X, so yes. Because he's flattening at some frequency like the suited ace five, at some frequency suited ace nine. So yes, that makes total sense.
And they're absolutely not doing King, King seven, they're not calling, King seven suited, they're not calling, but ace seven suited, they are.
Yeah.
And the super-low boards, like the, you know, the three deuce, deuce board, that's your, where you have big bets, that's your nut advantage, because you have aces, kings, queens, and they don't. Though you may both have overpairs, but you kill their overpairs and the overpair advantage.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure all the settings are correct before we start training. Okay, who wants to go first?
I'll do it. So thi- this is going to be check a lot. Ace low, low, though. I, I think we check.
Does everybody agree with that? Any other thoughts?
I mean, I think it might occasionally bet, but yeah, I think check is right.
Oh, I'm sorry. What are you going to say?
Uh, me, yeah, I was going to say that maybe we could go either way. Um, I guess you guys were. Looking at the report a little bit more and maybe saw that ace low, low was, was more of a check frequency as a, you know. Uh, versus like, you know. King X or ace Broadway.
Now, I'm curious, on this particular board, we do have some backdoor equity. I'm curious if this was, say, ace, three, two, uh, uh. Two of diamonds, you know, would that change at all?
Um, we can see that when we're done the hand. We'll look at that. So we check. He checks behind. Now what?
We continue to check.
Is anybody betting here?
Nope.
There's a little bit.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is really common. I mean, so the way that, I was watching some Andrew Broko stuff. The way he puts it is that when we're out of position and we get flatted in position. We're just, we're in a bad spot. We're unlucky. We started off the hand unlucky, and so. Usually, we're going to play a bit defensively. Um, I don't think we stab at this. I think we just take our King High at our showdown.
Makes sense.
Oops.
It goes for it a hundred percent.
I guess he, he does think you, you, we have to stab at it, because. There, I guess maybe the opponent, the in-position player has been really weak, and maybe the King High is often not good enough.
I don't know. It seems like. We beat everything that he didn't hit the board with.
Yeah, I mean, we let him win the hand with a pair of. Yeah, I mean, we let him win the hand with a pair of fours. But I'm okay with that. I mean, and notice even though bed is recommended, it's, there, there's really. Tiny, tiny EV difference.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's not a lot, that's very small EV though.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I can agree with that. I think if you are betting maybe. Has to be kind of opponent dependent, like, you know, they maybe they overfold and things like this.
I mean, it also depends on the opponent, right? If you have an aggressive opponent that takes all your, a lot of your checks as weakness. Then you're just letting him. Like, you know, bluff you every time.
Yeah, he, he could just, you know, like, raise you with any, with napkins, right?
So if you bet, then at least you, 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 you make him pause and he may just flat you. Rather than like, you know, push you around, and that's the only I can think of that would, but even though the EV numbers are so small that I think. It may be just better not to, not to care about it this one that much.
Yeah, and then fold now, right, Larry? Okay, so. What was your question about the flop?
Oh, uh, he wanted to see, uh, the three being a diamond.
If we didn't have the backdoor draws, would we be more likely to bet? So say it was ace, three, seven of diamonds.
Okay, so instead of a two of heart is two of diamond?
Or, or I was, uh, seven of diamonds, so we have no backdoor potential at all.
Oh, I see, gotcha.
Well, look at our kings here. Uh, well, king five is.
Okay, that's a gut shot.
It is betting the front door and back door. King seven.
Okay, yeah, so it's, it, it really doesn't make a difference, uh.
No, it does.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does make a difference, that's right, cause I'm looking at all.
If you have. Like, if you don't have the backdoor flush, it's almost checking a hundred percent. So if this came a diamond and you had hearts, you'd be checking. Because then it would be the same, because then it would be the same as if you had deaths, pretty much.
It's interesting because if you had asked me. I knew the difference would have been marginal, but I would have guessed the opposite. I would have guessed. Hey, you've got absolutely nothing going for you, so you might as well take a stab at the flop. I, because you do have that sliver of backdoor equity, so I had to have it backwards there.
And the button checked. So. On this flop. It is checking ninety percent. If you pretty much want to check range, that would be fine. It looks like the only two combos that are going to get hurt by checking range. Would be pocket twos and pocket threes.
But how often do we have those in UTG? This is.
They're slivers, like if we change this to range height.
Well, we're in low jack. So we have maybe like very little bit.
Do you have your gain up really high? There's a lot of, uh. Noise in the background when you talk.
What about now? It's probably by my laptop.
It's better, better.
Yep, that's my laptop.
And notice. This is something I wanted to point out a little earlier and didn't, forgot to do, do it in the thing. When it goes check, check, there's gonna be some, some, um. Cards that come where we get to bet large.
We're looking at button, right?
Hundred and seventy-five percent pot.
We're looking at button strap, right? So what are we betting? So we're betting. Putting a gut shot here, big. With our fox, which is interesting because we have marginal showdown.
We can bet some with our hand.
Maybe after, uh. So after it goes check, check and buttons capped. Can we look, can we filter for flush draws? Go down to filters da- down here, just above the four different combo types. Yeah, and then click on flush draw and then flush draw nuts. Yeah, so we. So once it goes. Check, check, right, on flop. Turns nine. We're going to semi bluff at. Over half the time. With our front door flush draw, because he's capped himself by checking. Is that, is that your guys reading here?
Yeah.
Like, yeah, like checking the flop and turn.
Yeah, once he, once he checked, well, no, we're talking about. Just after the flops, so this is just after the flop. He's, he's capped himself by checking back. So now. Our, um. But their equity wants to begin to try to fold out what we think is a large portion of his range, because he's capped himself.
But notice that the. The pair plus flush draws. Are mostly checking.
Yeah, so we've got marginal showdown.
Your pair of nines now has a decent amount of showdown.
I also think you gotta be careful about. I don't think he's necessarily capping himself, because it's, assuming this is a balanced range, they're gonna check back some pretty decent hands again.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, this is. You're right, but this is definitely, there is some theory behind why we're doing that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's like common. Well, I, I think that we're also checking some of our flush draws.
We can also, we can also, um. Test, sorry, I interrupted, did you escape? What were you saying?
No, no, I was saying that maybe like, yeah, solver wants to check some of our flush draws. I don't know how solver really thinks in these spots, but by the way, on, on the, um. Uh, yeah, on this hand, uh, I think. Yeah, I don't think low jack has deuces and threes. I think that starts coming in around the cutoff. So, yeah.
Also, maybe we could check how range equity changes after it goes check, check and the nine comes. Do we wanna look maybe at button and, and compare ranges before the nine and then after? So this is like right now, right? So this is check, check, nine comes. So UTG still has, oh, sorry, you'd have to hit clear, because we're just showing.
Yeah.
So, so we, we're, it's pretty much even. After it goes check, check. Now, what if you went to, uh, the, and you highlighted button just, yeah, there. Yes, it doesn't change much. We both have unfiltered ranges, but his range is somewhat capped. But you're right, Mike. I mean, he's, he's definitely gonna have some monsters that he checks back.
I wouldn't say capped. But.
It's just a term.
Some of the top of his range is now missing.
Well, let's, let's look and see what he checks. So if we look right here, right, we can see that he checks two pair. But he, I mean, so he's largely stripped of sets, right? We can look on right, just look at filters. And he's largely stripped of straights. But he's gonna check two pair at some frequency. So, you know, you can argue he's. Stripped of. The very top of his range.
Only two pair he has on the flop is ace three.
I'm, okay, I'm just looking at filters. Does he have? Does he have ace two suited? Nope.
No.
What about, uh, ace, queen, ace, king? How many people don't, uh, three bet that hand pre-flop?
It happens. You're supposed to, you're supposed to flat ace, king off at some frequency.
This is. A very low frequency call.
Ace, king, right, on the button?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ace, queen, it looks like this might be about thirty percent, and this is about twenty-five percent on the flop where it just calls. It's just easier for me to look at it in full height, but you have to remember that some of these are just slivers.
Now. Versus, what does that tell you about a player's strategy moving forward that? If they're gonna check a lot of their two pair on these boards versus bet and things like that.
Well, I don't think he checks a lot of his two pair. I mean, he's betting ace three more than half of the time. So even if he has ace three. In full, full range, which I think it's partial range here.
Yeah, well, you can, you can look at these numbers in filter and see what percentage of the range it is.
Even if he has ace three in full range, that's four combos, actually, three combos. And he's betting more than half of the time, so he might have like one combo left of ace three suited. So I wouldn't say, I mean, he has one in there to protect his checking range. But I wouldn't say it's like a lot, one combo's not a ton.
Okay, so the best ace, X that is checking are. Or ace, you know, ace, ten, ace, jack, pretty much, I guess.
Yeah, he's not. I wouldn't say he's capped. But he is missing some of the top of the range. Some frequency.
Well, he doesn't have sets very often, he doesn't have straights, we know that, and he doesn't. Have ace three that often that he checks back, we know that, but he still has top pair.
Top pair, he has seventy-five percent of his. He bets it. Like fifteen percent here, so he doesn't have all of his top pairs in range.
So. Yeah, so the question becomes, I guess the question asking is. At what portion of the range out of position after it goes check, check? On flop, do we semi bluff with? What, what portion do we bet with? And it looks like. From what we see here in the filter, looking at the draws. Our combo draws now are always betting, flush draw and, and our, our flush draws are betting at, you know, half the time it looks like. So notice on top pair, we're still gonna be very. Yeah, we're gonna still be very defensive, except for the very best kickers.
Under pairs were almost always checking. Second pair, we're starting to bet a little bit.
Yeah, I guess my main takeaway is on this board. In this configuration, we're just gonna do a lot of checking on flop.
But if, if second pair has a flush draw. It's not, with the extra equity of the flush draw, it's not, um, checking at all or betting at all.
Yeah, so I've seen this a lot. This is pretty common out of position.
And then when we get to the river. Remember, it, in this one, it checked all the way down. We're betting half of the time.
Yeah, I mean, the feeling I get from, from what solver is saying is that. Yeah, you don't have to bet the flop or the turn, but you could bet the river small.
Yeah, it's saying that. Look, look how much we're, look our size, our fluffy size to match our sets. Go play this way. Then we have this. Match big size when we're blocking the. Straight. We're blocking five, four.
It's not that, like, the eight changed things a lot. In fact. On the flop, we had like forty-nine percent, or I mean, on turn, forty-nine percent, so every card. Made it a little bit better for the button. But from about this point up. Where even we have a slight edge here. And then he catches up once it gets to. Pocket nines, I think we have them same frequency. So we're checking the straight a hundred percent. And. Kings and queens has a little bit of, um, blocky, block betting. Which will make sense, because the button should have bet most of his aces by now.
Yeah. Can we see how our under pairs to the ace are doing on the flop? Or turn?
Well, we have a lot of them here, too. So it looks like the ones we're betting down here, well, sixes. Needs a, um, a spade.
Sixes needs to get paid by poker coaching, so he can run these. To run these sessions, sorry. How to get that joke in there?
Fives and fours can bet because they're now a gut shot. But the better ones, like eights, sevens and higher mostly wants to check.
Yeah, I don't see the reason for mostly betting sixes and, yeah, we don't have, I mean, at least I don't have. Think any fours, threes and deuces there.
Maybe it's blocking six, five suited.
I mean.
Blocking his gut shot continues.
In theory, we should have these hands a little bit, like about ten percent of the time each. All right, 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 move on?
Yeah, another hand.
Yeah.
We spent a half hour on one hand. Oh. That's not right. How do I get back to the practice without?
Practice, click practice and stop. And it'll say live session, yeah.
There we go. And then we folded this.
Did he bluff us that little fucker?
Yeah, that's why we were supposed to bet the river.
That's what I was thinking, like, you, you, it's, if I were the, the button in that spot, I would bluff a fair bit if you keep checking like that.
Did he have queen ten off?
Yeah, let's move on, uh, we.
Let's move on.
We'll, we'll see the replay.
All right, Larry, it's still on you.
Yeah, uh, we check range here, even this, even this hand, which could benefit from. A little bit of protection, I think we check here despite. I think there's gonna be a peer check actually.
I'm not certain this is a check range. Cause it's the middle connected boards, the two's too far out.
Okay, yeah, I think this is checked though.
If this is, if this was like six, seven or eight, we would check. I think we have a little bit of betting with, on the two.
I'll say check, let's see.
Any other?
Uh, I think mostly. Mostly bet, well, yeah.
Definitely mostly check. This might have a little bit of, uh, of betting and it could be a big size.
We're supposed to check.
I think this is a, this is a big bet board, I bet infrequently and and large, and this is the infrequent.
Yeah, we just check this board.
Yeah, ninety-nine point nine, check two, yeah, I mean, just.
Right, I mean, I think we bet one twenty-five with aces.
All right, so check, check.
Yeah, so we now have straight on board. We still check. We we don't want, we just check, it sucks, but we, in theory, I think we check a lot.
Everybody in checking?
Agreed.
Okay, yeah, do it.
I'm just surprised that we checked the flop so much, but yeah.
This is theory, man. Okay, so he he obviously capped. So we can't go ham here with sizing. We always have the best hand. Doesn't, I think, ever play ten nine this way, which is the only combo that really would have us beat. Uh, maybe twos and sixes, but not really. I I think that we I think we either bet smaller or B seventy or B thirty. Sand's so good, maybe we get to B seventy. I think it's B seventy or seventy-seven percent.
I think it's B two.
Yeah, I I agree because there's so fair, my cold here, right?
Yeah, it might be thirty percent because because he's got such a capped range. Um, but I think it's, I think we're gonna bet seventy percent here. I think I bet seventy.
Oh, it's gotta be B two.
So Larry, you're saying bet five?
Yes.
I think it's B five or B ten.
I think we get to overbet because he's so capped.
That can be wrong twice.
No, I think after check, 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 check. Overbet is an option quite a bit. I'm not sure what happens when the top card pair so. Like if this was a three of hearts, I would think that that ten would be a reasonable response.
We can look at that line of the annual report.
Yeah, we just can't spend a half hour on every solve.
I agree with both, that two and some five, whatever, let's go.
And you're sticking with five, Larry?
Um, that's my final answer.
Final answer.
Uh, you guys got it right.
Yeah. More overbet, wow.
I wasn't sure with the paired ten if we still overbet.
Yeah, because I think you can just put their bluff catchers in hell. When we haven't, we haven't bet yet and the top pair card, the top card pairs after it goes check, check, check all the way through. I think uh bluff catching from the button is gonna be kind of a a thing.
Yeah, click, if you click, if you click the uh, what do you wanna look at? You wanna look at the solve?
It's very interesting to bet large. I wouldn't think that. I would never think to bet large at that.
Well, I think the large bet is kind of polar and it's trying to say, you know, either I have a bluff or have a good hand.
It is check range. On the flop.
I mean, think about your reaction to the big bet as the button. You're like, come on, you expect me to believe you had a ten and checked it three times?
Yeah, that way, that's that's it, right?
I just, it's hard for me to know what he calls with, that's worse to an over that. Maybe we can look at that. I mean, we wanna get called, right? So what is he gonna get caught? What's calling this worse?
Under pairs.
Ten nine?
And maybe some ace.
Well, that's better because that was a boat.
Oh, that's better, shit.
No, I think it's his pocket pairs, you know, his his uh, second pairs, he just doesn't believe you. He was happy to check it down and he thinks you're full of shit.
Yeah, pocket sevens, pocket eights, things like that.
And the six hits. We don't have a tremendous amount of overbets, but most of the betting is seventy-five percent and above.
Is, are the bets that are coming from um this Broadway region, are those front door flush draws? Which is the heuristic we saw in the last hand? So we're betting the most with the front door, but still we're checking a lot.
Yeah, but we're still betting the other king jack.
What about king, queen, two, story?
Yeah.
And notice all of our top pairs are checking.
So that's the combo draw. So what, what are we doing with the combo draw? What's our, what's our frequencies with the combo, the queen jacks? Yes, we're betting quite a bit.
Spades, we're betting a lot. Looks like fifty fifty with the other queen jacks. And eight, seven, actually, we're checking the spades the most with eight, seven.
Interesting, maybe it has to do with reverse implied odds.
And then when we get to the river. Look at all the large betting. Seventy-five percent or higher, almost thirty percent of the time.
Yeah, so if we're going to use that sizing with our bluffs. Can you um can you, in filters, can you go down and do trash hands? Let's see where our bluffs are coming from. So if we're gonna use this sizing with our trash hands, we're gonna have to use it with the top of our range. And trips is obviously that, so that makes sense. You nailed it, Mike.
Yeah, I'm curious what he calls with, uh, what's his calling range now?
Yeah, yeah, that I'm very curious as to what he calls to the overbet after this line.
Yes, like what hands are we?
So if we overbet, B one fifty, what is it, where, so his what about overpair, second pair?
Second pair shoves it in your face.
Yeah, ninety-eight.
Eight, nine blocks of straight.
Do not try that at home.
Eights are calling at a frequency, sevens are calling at a frequency, even fives.
Overpairs.
Yeah, overpairs.
Second pairs are calling for the most part.
I don't, I don't know how much he gets here with overpairs. What's our normalization show? What if we normalize the range?
But eights and sevens, pocket fives. Fives and fours are calling a fair bit. Or not, really not.
Yeah, third pair and low pairs are still calling. A little bit of ace high.
Yeah, so that that's not gonna happen in reality, right? Maybe then that does call for the B seventy-five because of B one fifty's, this whole portion that he's getting profit from with his B one fifty. Humans aren't gonna call.
You might be surprised.
I would see people calling pretty wide.
Hey, Anna, yeah, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. Maybe people will hear this more than I think.
Like, I know on a paired board, you're supposed to call down with some aces.
What else? Uh, you don't mind going back? What else are we betting? A hundred and twenty-five with aside from the ten?
We've got all that trash, right?
All right, some overpairs. These buffs here.
King, queen, king, queen, right, like king, queen, king, jack. I mean, there's, there's a fair bit.
Yeah, normalize it though, because sometimes it's deceiving when you see those.
Oh, fair enough. Yeah, 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 please. Normalize height, yeah, there you go. Yeah, but look at king, queen, right? Like, I was like, king, you get there, you you, a fair, you you know, yeah, of course, the tens, but like, king, yeah, king, queen, king, jack, main ones.
We don't have many bluffs here getting to the river, right?
But it's more than I thought. I mean, if I knew, if I knew it'd be, you know, we're gonna have that many bluffs at the river, I would have probably failed to bet big myself, but I didn't think we have that many bluffs at all. So that's why I was like, oh, maybe shouldn't just bet small.
We checked all the way to the river. Why wouldn't we not have bluffs?
No, that's my mistake. I I didn't say I was correct. Yeah, I think we can move on because I think we got got the gist of this.
And yeah, uh.
Why isn't it, it doesn't have the live here this time, Larry?
Sorry?
Here we go.
Is this next hand?
Yeah.
Want me to do one more? Pass it on to someone else?
Yeah.
So we saw queen highboards in the, we check at some frequency, uh, although we do have some sexy backdoor. I think we do get some bets here, but I think checking's fine. He checks the red choice here.
Does anybody have any different?
I'm on team B thirty-three.
Check's always gonna be safe.
I'll check, yeah.
RNG rolled an aggressive number, so if you do bet, it's gonna be small.
Yeah, mostly betting if betting.
Oh, it's big.
This is more betting than I thought we would have.
Yeah, way more.
Uh, I'm I'm guessing because of the added equity, the uh, the overpair and the backdoor.
We've got two backdoors and an overcard and, but more than that, I think it's the range. Maybe we can look at the ag report for queen four, three. See what we do with our whole range.
Also, I mean, this is also one where when you look at the EVs, they're all the same.
They're all pretty close. I mean, the only, the only thing that that's not good is bet small. Right?
No, versus all in, yeah.
Yeah, bets very small, all in are bad, but everything else is is all pretty much the same, awash.
Well, this might be driven by the RNG too, right? So I think that this reflects what the RNG says.
I think have RNG off.
No, the the RNG actually doesn't make any difference in terms of where the check marks go. It's the double check mark that the RNG says, hey, you you guessed it right, based on what you, what the RNG says, but the actual percentages are gonna be the same, no matter what the RNG has rolled.
Yeah, 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 percentages are the same, but I think the RNG gives us the double check mark, right? If we match the RNG.
No, I I have that turned off.
Yeah, it was off. I saw that. It was off.
I mean, this is the highest percentage action. That's why it's got double check mark.
It's weird though, because it's it's not the highest DV action.
I wonder if I can even.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I like this hand a lot better. It's fine. So we actually um we actually gonna have checks here sometimes, uh, but we can bet, we can do it. Essentially, I think often when we have ninety percent equity, we could do anything we want. We're blocking continues. Uh, he does have under pairs that I'll call. But um, I don't mind checking here still. Do we see a theme in the way I play out of position?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would.
Oh, sorry. That was next, don't hit.
Yeah, yeah, check's fine. I like.
I personally like, like, like a bet more, just to build a pot more. I mean, if anything goes in the month, then I, I mean, that, that's just me.
Are gonna have a little bit higher frequency betting?
Yeah, we should look at pair.
Checking's always safe on a position.
Let's protect our checking range on this one. Let's check.
Yeah, I'm also thinking on this board, yeah, we have huge equity advantage, but if all the money goes in, we lose.
Yeah, you could definitely have a better jack, but well, there's only one.
Or or a pair five, but there's no, he's not, I mean, what's he shoving money in the pot with? He doesn't have overpairs.
Yeah, he's lacking, he's lacking aces, king. He has queens at some low frequency.
Queens at some frequency.
But he doesn't have aces and kings, you're right.
Right, all I'm saying is if he wants, if he wants to throw a hundred big blinds in on the flop, we lose.
Uh, yeah, but the slot is not gonna.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily an argument to check, though.
Fair.
Yeah, everything's pretty much the same, EV. Alright, so let's check, let's see if he bets for us, which we can hope he does.
He does.
He does. So now it gets interesting, right? Um, I guess a small bet, we're gonna have check raises. And yeah, let's just check race. Let's just do the, let's just go a fifty percent check raise.
No, call.
Well, yeah, we have slow plays too, but with this deep, we're gonna have some check raises.
Yeah, I like it. I like, I like the 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 fifty percent check raise.
It, so I think this, I think this action our part is very much based on his sizing. Uh, when he chooses this low sizing, small sizing, we're gonna have a higher frequency XR than if he chose, you know, B seven, so.
Yeah, what bluffs do you think that we're gonna have?
I do have to mention, we looked at the check raising frequency of a bet thirty-three. And globally, it was only ten percent.
I bet it's gonna be closer to fifteen. But still, not that big of a difference.
What, you're 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 betting? You're betting me when I just told you I saw the number before we started doing the session?
Oh, okay, that's fine.
To stop talking, just book the bet.
I'd say your bluffs come from overcards with a backdoor, like king, queen of hearts, diamonds, spades, that's where your bluffs come from, I think.
Well, queen ten. We'll have some bluffs.
All right, so. Nine, ten, things like this.
Larry, you wanted to go fifty percent?
Yeah, I would slow place a lot, but I'm trying not to slow play as much, so yeah, let's, let's uh be fifteen.
Yep.
There you go.
Good call.
Calling is also fine, too.
Yeah, we can do either here.
But if if both are fine, I would have more money in it now.
Okay, so this is interesting, so he has to call here. So what's he gonna call with? This, he's gonna call with uh fives? He's gonna call with a jack. He has he has better jacks, right? He has, but he hasn't, there's only one combo. But he does have queen jack and king jack. He has queen jack suited. He has king jack suited. Yeah, okay, uh, but there's only one combo of all of these. So um, I think we, I don't think we slow down. I think we be seventy-five.
Do they have any worse checks than we have? Maybe just jack nine, right?
They have the same hand. I don't, I think they have jack nine, but that's it.
Right.
Okay, before we enter this, can I ask, I think Larry is the player here, what is your goal for this hand? Are you trying to get sacks in?
I think that we have the best hand here more than eighty percent of the time, so yeah, I think, I think I'd stack off with this.
Well, your SPR is four. So if you wanna, you should go pot, pot. If your goal is to get stacks in.
No, that's not an option.
Oh. Stupid solver.
Yeah, I see your, I see your point.
Hmm, what happens when? Say you bet around pot here and the four spades hits.
Ah, we slow down. Check.
I don't know. I like the awful bet here. Twenty-seven, actually, that's, you know, get in now, like, and you know, you, you say you're up a lot, like eighty plus percent of the time. I agree with that.
Excuse me.
I don't think, I mean, I think you have, uh, you, you, I think you're, uh, the, the, the back, to the answer Joey's question, if I'm playing for stacks, I'm going pot, pot and the, a backdoor spade draw coming in isn't, isn't scaring me off.
No, the four of spades. It hits both backdoors.
Still not scaring me off, but I wouldn't have Ray, I wouldn't have checked raise the flop because I don't wanna play for stacks here. But having done that, I think we're committed to the line.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think there's, I think four spades is already played the, one of the worst cards.
Yeah, probably the single worst card.
And so I, yeah, we could check down. I would be seventy-five here.
Yeah, I'll agree.
Oops.
Ooh, have a smaller check.
Wow, check, that's been small.
Wait, when there's a paired flop, it does tend to drive down our betting.
Yeah, he called your tech race. He's, he's saying he's pretty strong.
Okay, well, I guess we're gonna have to change move and check.
Yeah, that's zero percent.
It's a very interesting line. So now I guess we're in check call mode. Unless we pull out the rare. He just betted to us again. Yeah, we just call.
Yeah, I figure you have to be a little bit defensive now.
Double check raise is quite rare.
Who wants to do the rare double check raise?
No, too ambitious. This is not, this hand's not, not enough to do, my opinion, or to do double check raise.
Double check raise, can you, can you get away from the river if you double check raise here? You know, saving yourself your stack? What do you think?
Well, yeah, he bet so small. I don't see against a solver. I don't think we will get to fold jacks. In population, it's different.
Yeah.
So is everybody gonna call?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, call.
Yeah, it's the only thing.
Dickin.
Now what?
But I don't think we, I don't think we, so the backdoor came in. Think we check.
You think he's got two four here?
No, he's still got nut at hands. He's, he still has Queen Jack, King Jack, uh, you could have Ace Jack, you get a fives. What sucks is when he checks back tens or something like that.
Right, so we don't block that. Yeah.
We're not gonna bet out of flow here. It's, I mean, to bet out of flow and dunk, it would have to be an equity shifting card. So we're not gonna, obviously, we're not gonna fall to that siding. Uh, he might, he might have fives here.
Easy call.
Yeah.
I don't think, well, I wouldn't say it's easy, but I think we have to call. I wouldn't like it.
Just wanna put it in?
I think if we were trying to put it in, we would have had more bets on turn. We checked it, so. I think that we call. I think, I think solver is telling us that this hand is not as valuable as I thought by the fact that we checked turn. So I think we call.
I fold.
But the question is, if we're gonna shove, what, what worse is gonna call us?
None. That's why I, I say, I, I, I didn't even consider a shove because I can't see a hand that he will call here that's worse.
I mean, he does.
We Jack nine?
Maybe just Jack nine, and there's only one combo, so I think we call.
Yeah. I just don't see how many hands that, that very many, even older, he's gonna call that shove.
Alright, so we got one fold and a bunch of calls and no raises.
Yeah, we, yeah, we get some all in. We, we don't fold.
I wanna see.
Queen. Solver.
King, Queens. Man, that, that, that's some, that's some, I, I, yeah, all these calls of King, Queen. Call, check, raise, call.
I mean, I don't think, I mean, I, I think his aggressive flop play with the overs is fine. Uh, that's why I would have done, I, my line for this would have been check, call, flop, and just let him be the aggressor and then, you know, raise the river depending on what we see.
Yeah, I can see that.
Cause I love the ace on the, on the river, because I was thinking he might have Ace, King, Ace, Queen, or he might have Ace, King or Ace, Queen, which he thinks is gin for him. So I would have, you know, if, if I had gone check, call, flop, check, call, turn, then I would have gone check, raised river, and his Ace, Queen is like, shit, I guess I gotta call.
So the one thing I'd like to look at is on turn, out of position, when we chose to check, after he called our check raise. I'd like to see what solver thinks our equity is, because this'll tell us whether this is a bluff or whether this is.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's value. You're not.
Well, when we check on turn, what is, what, what is it? So, we raised, he called. Yeah, this is, this is value, right? He raised, we called, but on turn, we chose to check, which I, uh, which I got wrong, because it, and I'm curious as to why solver's doing that. Is it trapping? A, or is it B, actually thinking that, uh, it has, you know, fifty percent equity. It's in like, in that in-between space.
But I agree whoever said about the ace on.
So here, if we go to, if we, if we go to, if we go to equity, right? This is EV, but if we go to equity.
No, this is equity.
And then we go to, yeah, and then we just look, yeah, so we've got, so this is a trap. Cause this, I think this equity that you see here is eighty-five percent equity is enough to bet. Can we all agree on that?
Yeah.
So then this is a trap check on turn. In solver world. And that makes sense too, because we saw that it, it checked, shoved, it check shoved at some frequency on river. So that tells us that it is now with its eighty-six percent equity traffic.
Yeah, we didn't continue with our so-called bluff, but yeah, like on a paired board in the flop, maybe we could check what hands are we checking?
What do we have? We had Jack, uh, we had Jack ten, right?
The Jack ten.
Yeah.
Jack ten is calling a hundred percent pretty much.
It, it makes sense to protect your checking range, right? Because what, what are you gonna, what strong hands are you gonna check with? I mean, that Jack ten is as good as a, of a card, right? Because you're gonna bet Ace Jack, you could definitely be Ace Jack. So, and you're betting like, oh, you know, better handed, like, like, you know, full boats and stuff. So what hands, like, that are good, that you're willing to call big bets from your opponent that will, that can, you know, that you wanna protect your checking range. I mean, Jack ten is about as good as you're gonna, like, I think that's pretty ideal.
Well, we can see it's, it's not as good as we, it's not as good as the other ones, which is, and so maybe it isn't a trap, because look at how our bracket, our betting frequency. Do you mind, Joey, um, filtering for trips? Sometimes it's easier to understand what we're talking about if we just see the combos that we're talking about.
Yes, that'd be great.
So you can see it's betting at a clip small with the better trips. Maybe it's a question also of, maybe it's not a trap. Maybe what it is, is that we filtered his range when we check raised on flop, and when we filter his range, that filtered range, his calling range includes a lot of better Jack X. So now, we still have value, but we don't have the best value.
We still have eighty percent equity.
Yeah, yeah. True, but we have the wor, we have the worst trips that we have.
Yeah.
It's, it's either a trap or it's, it's either a trap or it doesn't think it has the best at enough frequency for it to check.
I don't know what the term is for this, but yeah, we have a huge equity advantage, but if, but if it's a giant pot and we get called, our equity is bad.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. There is a term for it. I don't remember what it is. But that's a very good way to put it.
Actually, we oh, after, after we just call. Or no, after the button bets, we have a big disadvantage in equity.
This is on turn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't one way to figure out like this question is that, like, like, what if, like, let's say on the turn or the flop, the opponent shoves? Like, what will, what will be your, your calling range if he shoves, like on the turn, for example?
But it has to be in the solve for that to work, but I don't think it has it. I mean, that would be a good way to figure it out. You're right.
Yeah.
But we're not gonna ever fold eighty-five percent equity.
Yeah.
The answer, I mean, I, my answer is I would certainly call with my Jack ten there because he should not do that with Ace Jack. He may do that with Ace Jack, but that would be a horrible play with Ace Jack. So I'm calling, I'm, I'm figuring it's a bluff to just shove for two X pot on the turn.
Oh, well, he has no, he has no shelves. He has.
Right, but that was a question. That was Prime's question.
About one percent, that's more than fifty percent pot.
Right, in solver land, so.
One, one combo here somewhere that bets more than fifty percent pot.
No, that's exactly what we're saying, what, what Prime's point was, or my, my point was, I think that, so if he does something that he should absolutely never do, I'm not gonna put him on the nuts. I'm gonna put him on some shit that I wanna call.
I have a good hand history for that today, by the way.
And we are mixing some dunks in here, but our combo mostly checks.
So, so the actual raise is a very good point is what do we do like to better our game? When your opponent does something that a solver would never do? Like, then I'll be like, whoa.
Well, then, I mean, so when we're talking about shoves, you need to estimate what your S equity is, which is very hard to do, and then compare that to your pot odds. Um, and yeah, I've got a good example of that in, uh, hand histories as well. But yeah, I mean, so if someone shoves on you, let's say he did shove on us on turn. Uh, we just have to, we just have to understand what our pot odds are and then estimate what our equity is. Easier said than done.
And then when we get to the river, is this, when we get to the river after the button bets, we have like fifty-seven percent equity.
Can you normalize, see how often we get here with these, with the trips on this line?
Well, with Jack ten suited, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we never get here, we never get here with our best. Yeah, I think, I.
Well, Ace ten, you, you get the Ace ten a li, a, a little bit, but yeah, but, but Jack ten's definitely more common.
Well, I think this is very much driven on the fact that nothing the solver hits more than getting stacked. So that's why it's playing a little bit more defensively with its Jack ten, which is the worst trips it has.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's important that on this particular board too, it's incredibly dry. So there's no way, I mean, the button really doesn't have anything good unless it beats you. So I want Button to just keep bluffing it off. If it was a Ace ten ten on the flop, then I would be much more aggressive because he has such a high propensity for having aces. But he's got nothing on ten ten five.
Yeah, maybe another way to look at it is that when we take an aggressive line with that Jack ten, the portion of his range that is calling our aggressive line is so largely composed of better trips that it's not profitable, profitable in the eyes of the solver.
Exactly.
Yeah, we saw when we got to the river, our trips was only fifty-seven percent.
Yeah.
Um, that's not a lot for a hand that's strong.
Yeah, yeah, I think it gets down to the fact that, I mean, our check raise on flop was a highly filtering um, play on a paired board.
Alright.
Uh, he had one of the combos that could call because he had two overs and, and two backdoors, but uh, and then we got lucky because he turned it into a bluff, but we can see that, uh, yeah, we can see that our worst combo that continues in that filter way checks on turn because it's the worst trips.
Okay, I think we're about as far as we can get on that.
Yeah.
Um, let's do somebody else, but we, we gotta do them quick, cause we're, we've been over an hour for. So who wants to do a quick three?
I can do a quick three. I move fast.
Alright, go ahead.
Uh, B thirty-three.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I think we're checking.
Checking.
Yeah, I think we're checking too.
I think we're checking. I think it's gonna have some thirty-three though.
Agree.
A little bit, yeah.
Fifty.
Fifty? Anybody else betting here?
If we're betting, I think it's B thirty-three, but I think we also have a lot of checks. I think, I think we checked this combo.
Pretty much the same.
I mean, what we saw, what we saw in the aggroports is that he's got a lot of flouting of Asax in theory here. So I think what we, we check. We're just playing like little pussies. Uh, I shouldn't say, we're just playing like we're playing very timidly out of position on flop.
Alright, but he wants to bet fifty. It seems like he doesn't like to check.
Yeah, just do it, do it. Let's see. Uh, there you go. Check, check is the.
Yeah, pretty much.
But they're all the same EV.
That's true.
It is in there, so we can still keep this in.
Alright, go Matthew.
But.
Let's, I, I'm on team Queen of Diamonds.
These answers are really gonna start eating into my scores.
Sorry.
Just joking. I don't care about.
I know, I know, I know.
Just manhandle the situation, Matthew. Get it done.
Um, check.
Yeah.
Good one.
Check.
Probably range.
Right. Check almost a hundred percent. Now what?
True, check.
Check. This is not a, that's not a good card for us.
Good one, Matt. Check.
Yeah, this one I'll pretty much will give up.
Well, this is one. Yeah, this is one where I resist. I think old me would say, oh, I picked up equity bet, but yes, I picked up equity, check.
That marginal showdown.
Picked up equity, you bet.
Oh.
Eh, every answer's right.
Yeah, pretty much.
Alright, so we checked. He checks behind.
Check.
Anybody else trying to bet here?
I would.
I think with the board pairs, we do get, um, I think when the board pairs, we do get um. A B thirty-one. I'd bet two here.
Are we betting for value or is it bluff?
Also bluff.
It's quite mergey, actually. I think it's a little mergey.
I I think we have a sufficient showdown value.
How can it be mergey?
Because it can get called at some frequency by worse Asax.
Check.
So if you check here, if they bet, what would you do? Would you call? If they bet like half pot or?
Half pot or more I fold.
I'm, I may call if we check here.
Yeah, I may call if he if he bets small, but I think fifty percent, the question was fifty percent pot or more, then I'll give it up.
You're never gonna face a a bet of smaller than sixty, probably.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Yes, you will.
We get.
Not with the solver, you won't.
The possible calls from Ace, Queen and Ace Jack, there's just too few combos. That we're targeting for value. And we are too good to bluff. We beat all of his non-paired hands. And. And the way the action went, he shouldn't be folding any nines. So they're not really folding anything better.
Okay, so we check, let's see what happens.
All right, I'm killing the solver.
Well.
Uh, I figure I have to call here. I I I I I suppose I say like, if you take that lines emerge like line and not as a. As a bluff to try to bluff, then yeah, I figure I have to call here.
I think it, I think it's good mix.
Yeah, I think this is also one where it's solver versus population, you know, I'm.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Population, I'm never calling here. Solver, I think we have to call some.
Yeah, I think that's a perfectly reasonable answer. I I it's hard for me to separate the two.
Why? Because a king blocker?
No, because people just don't bluff the river.
I know, I'm saying here, like, why call here?
Because he's just reacting to your weakness and bluffing.
On a paired board. Quite often, especially when the hand was played this week. We're gonna have to call with some ace highs. Against the solver.
So skate when the board pairs, two two good things happen. It reduces his uh trap sets. reduces the frequency of trap sets. And there's one less card that he has that could have paired up. Right? This is seven, he could have had a random seven, but that's not it. So I think because of those two dynamics. We hero call at a higher frequency.
Yeah, I'm gonna stick with fold, but everything you're saying makes perfect sense against solver.
Yeah, I think this will, yeah.
This one folds full.
All right, I'm getting your batting average back up, Joey.
I'm wondering if if we are like Ace eight or Ace seven if we're calling, because they block the straights.
Yeah, why don't we look at solve and see what our calling threshold is here?
Well, hang on, let's see what happens.
Okay.
You folded.
No, but what did he have?
It doesn't matter, you folded.
Oh, that fucker.
Fucker.
God, that's hilarious. He's queen.
Let's just look at this river here.
Let's see where our calling threshold is. So. So are we calling with any ace highs? I guess not for a call. Yeah, folding all ace highs.
Yeah.
Can we look at filter real quick? So let's see, so third pair we're calling. We just need a pair.
Yeah, you're calling any pairs.
But third pair we're turning into a bluff.
But Ace high is awful.
When we have, when we get there, I have a hand.
There is some.
A hand I have to share is. All right, was that my three?
Yeah, um, you wanna take five minute break and then we'll do shared or um. Hands, if you have any hands to share?
Sure, yeah, and I have one that's relevant to this conversation.
Yeah, if anybody knows of any hands of I'm playing out of position, they might be good to look at today.
Oh, well, this was in position, but it's similar.
All right, I'll be back in five minutes.
Good afternoon, Joseph. What's the reminder for?
Connor. Connor.
What's the reminder for?
Us.
Okay, I'll remind you at two fifteen PM.
Go ahead, check my hands from last night real quick. Larry, you back?
Yes, I am.
Do you wanna run the second half?
Uh, okay.
Give my voice a little bit of break. I have asthma.
You sound like you're fighting a little cough.
No, I have asthma and sometimes the more I talk, the more. It drains me of air. But I do have.
I'm against. Against running out of air.
Yeah, it triggers my asthma the more I talk.
Matthew, should we look at your hand?
Sure, I I just posted it in the chat.
And I have a hand for you, Larry.
All right, I've got one as well. All right, five five, big boys.
Yeah, big boys. Okay, so the key setup here is I have the a UTG plus one here. Is raising a ton. He hasn't shown down much, but he's raising to the extent that he can't have that many hands. So I've been waiting to three bet him light, planning to three bet him light, but I just keep getting crap. So finally, I get a good hand. And to me, this would, I mean, this is actually. Could be a three betting hand under normal circumstances, probably a call, but against this particular opponent, it's a sure three bet.
So this guy's got, it's just a super loose, like.
Yeah, he's raising. Thirty-five, forty percent of hands every time it gets to him.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the SB who becomes the primary villain is new to the game. Don't know anything about him. The only thing that I know is. If there's, it's been ingrained into my soul from everything I've ever learned, you should absolutely never cold call a three bet.
Yeah, true. So maybe new to the game and new to poker. All right, should we look?
Yep.
So, and this is a normal RFI stats for this game, right?
A little, it's a little bit big, but I'm like, woo-hoo, this is exactly what I've been waiting for for an hour.
All right, makes sense. And you're pretty deep here, by the way. You're, you started off two hundred bigs effective with this guy.
Yep, yep.
But that's not gonna matter because I guess he's gonna fold, so.
Because everything happens exactly. I knew he was raising light. He folds and now I'm heads up against an unknown with this. Who should never be in this spot. The solver's broken. My brain is broken.
So what kind of, so crew, what kind of combos can we see here?
I'm guessing, like, I don't know, but I'm, this has to be. Pretty darn good hands, but not good enough to four, so. Nines through queens, some ace queens, maybe some ace king. Maybe some suited broadways, you know, I mean, who the hell knows? He should not be here.
Yeah, I think I make a mistake of always thinking this is, of thinking this is set mining. Too much. I think this is more than just set mental. I think this also can be suited broadways. Uh, but I think a lot of, I think a lot of set mining. I would even put it down to like sevens to jacks.
Yeah, I think, Matt, you might be a little bit tight. When you're considering. What a loose live player will be playing here. I have.
I don't know. You absolutely might be right. I don't know.
I have seen people cold call three bets. With six, five suited.
Live and learn.
Because. What what some of these really weak players do is they have a list of hands that they like to play. And they want to see a flop with them. This is an expensive flop. But he's got a hand he wants to see the flop with.
That's for darn sure.
And some of them are ridiculously wide.
So he's put in his sixteen big blinds here, right, to see a flop?
I mean. You try to consider what you think a, like, if you made this mistake, what would you have? And you. You would think like jacks, tens, maybe ace, queen suited, some stuff like that. Um. Although we know in the solver it doesn't do that, but. You gotta remember, these people aren't studied. So. What a lot of these people do is they just ha- have a list of hands they like to play. And know where to play them when they can.
I agree with that.
Let's see the flop. So flop. Hand five, four. Let's see what our. Their fish ducks. Checks to you.
And so what do we do here? What's the consent? The gigs? Throw out what you do.
This is tough.
Oh, that's tough. I that that, I mean, it's not like super bad. I mean, you have two over cards on a back door, flush draw. Uh, he checks. I still think you you're good here for quite a bit of time. You should consider how loose the guy is. I I think you bet small.
So let's talk about range versus ranger. So your range. So you, you're uncapped, he is capped, right? We can agree he's capped. He doesn't have aces, kings and queens. Probably doesn't have ace, king. And. Most of the time doesn't have ace, queen.
But I wa- I agree he's capped. I would not rule out queens and ace, king. I think they're low frequency, but. Possible, but whatever, the principle's the same, yeah.
Yeah, so but you're uncapped, right? So you've got all the aces, all the queens. Um, so, yeah, you've got a clear overpair advantage here.
I.
And if he's set, if he's set mining, he's gonna fold on flop. So I like, I like to see that here.
I think you're complicating it a bit. Um. Based on what we just discussed about his pre-flop. What is one thing you could say about his range?
It's cap. He doesn't have aces, kings and queens.
No. It's wide.
Very pair heavy.
It's too wide. I wouldn't even say it's pair heavy.
So I'm too wide, then 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 we should bet, because he should have a lot of.
It's too wide, three bet, C bet, clean up your equity.
That's what I was thinking. That's why I said I I was, didn't take long because he was new to the game. He's stick, he's, you know, calling station. What, like, you're ahead a lot. You you're wider than normal. You're ahead, like, your equities, your range advantage is bigger than normal. So, yeah, I would.
And your hand will give you a decent amount of um. Double cards that can come that can give you a double barrel too.
Yeah, so Prime, I think, yeah, I think you're on, I think you're spot on. I think we all agree you should bet here.
About thirty-three percent.
We're not all on board.
No worries, so.
I will say, in game, I thought.
That, let's give him that. He didn't shove.
Yeah, I I don't care. I don't hate it. Come on, that, Joey is by no means a terrible.
Joey is needling me because I tend to shove too much. Yeah, my thought here was. That he was a little tighter than what Joey was outlining and he's really pair heavy and we know he's a calling station. So it's like, am I gonna fold out nines? Am I gonna fold? And there's a good chance. He's, he may, he could check raise with jacks. And I I wanna, I wanna see the next card, see if I can pick up some equity.
All right, I I can understand that. Um. Matthew, if you were gonna bet here, when you choose to bet, what size would you use?
Well, that's the other thing is, I think if I bet, I have to bet big. And I don't wanna do that. Uh, so I, tha- that's another reason to check.
Well, I think you could have easily bet one-third. When, when his range is too wide. And. He's going to have troubles defending his range, even against a small bet. Like, if you bet one-third, he has to continue with seventy-five percent of his range.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Which could be a lot. It could even be a hand like, you know, six, you know, six, six, eight, like, like, you know what I mean? Like, back door, back door, straight, back door, like, like that kind of, he has to defend, like.
He's got king, queen, king, queen of diamonds here. He's got ace, eight of diamonds. King, queen, king, queen of diamonds here. He's got ace eight of diamonds. He's got ace five sometimes. Or, yeah, or ace six, ace six sometimes.
Okay.
Let's go ahead.
So check, okay, eight.
Yeah, no thanks, you know, absolutely no, didn't pick up any equity.
He checks, back on you. So, you know, I could see betting if this is an equity shifting card. I don't see this as an equity shifting card.
No, nothing changes. In fact, it's actually a little worse for you.
So I think that, I think that we often will check back again here. But you do, right?
Mm-hmm.
King comes. He checks. All right, now, I think you've got, I would argue this is a high frequency bluff.
Mm-hmm.
This card's really good for your range. His three checks, I think oftentimes are gonna be nines, sevens and jacks. Maybe not jacks, but nines and sevens. I think he bets his sets. I think he's got eights and tens, he bets. Uh, some people will trap three streets, but it's rare. So I think.
Do you want to bet?
I.
And what, what size do you want to bet?
I want to bet a B sixty. I want to bet eighty. I want to bet a hundred bucks. What do you think, Joey?
Anyone else?
Um, I would.
I would check.
I, I don't know now, after we check, check. But I'd hate to see pocket twos get there for free all the way to the river.
This king is like, I mean, I mean, ace king is the most, is how many, sixteen combos? I mean.
Yeah.
I think you just. And what's the size, what'd you use here?
I think I'm going seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, I think a hundred bucks. I think seventy-five is fine.
Am I the only one who's checking here?
I don't think checking is terrible. I think, I think you can have some showdown value here. I personally would be checking this card as well.
I, I think this is similar to that scenario that Ace King had. Because it's like, you, you, you have some, sure, and, and I think he's gonna call with any pair. Like, he, I don't see, I don't see him bluffing. Like, you, you, you know, if you check it, I don't think you have to worry about him bluffing very much here. So he's very likely, oh, he'll check.
Yeah, I feel like we're moving to pairs here every time that he's checked.
There's a weird dynamic I've experienced playing live is they, they, they put you on ace king, right? That's their, their saying. And you could bet here and just get lots of better hands to fold, but I think you do have showdown value with your ace jack.
Yeah, in, in real time, I'm thinking, okay, look, I don't have, I, I, any show, I don't think I have showdown value because he pretty much, I think everything he has.
Not even though you don't have queen ten, queen jack.
I, I, I think you do have showdown value.
Yeah, that's why.
Tiny, anyway, but I want to say, I have ace king, I checked my ace king behind, and now I hit it. Ha ha, your nines are no good.
Yeah, we talked about his range. We talked about his range being too wide.
Oh, look at that bet.
Well, play, let's see, let's see what happens.
I like it, no matter what happens.
Does he hero with, agreed, does he hero with his sevens?
He tanks and then folds. He's, he tanked, so he definitely had something in that range. One thing that I've been doing a lot lately, just on principle, is when you have these hands that go check, 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 I'm just betting, and they, they're not calling on the river. I mean, that like so frequently.
Yeah.
When I don't have a hand.
Well, yeah, this is like nine.
If you, if you bet the flop, you'll get more hands to fold because now you gotta consider, he has some hands that hit either the eight or king.
Yep.
That you would have cleaned up on the flop.
But I guess I'm thinking, if he's got nines or eights, you know, on the flop, is he gonna fold that to, I don't think he folds that to one-third pot bet, and then I'm in a real spot on the river, on, on the turn, like, do I double barrel?
With certain cards, yes, you do double barrel. It, if I, if I see bet with the ace jack, I'm double barreling any club, any card higher than a ten, any card that pairs the board.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that makes sense. That, that's what I was thinking. Like, if I, the way I would have played this, I would definitely, I'll bet the, the flop very frequently. And if I bet the flop, then I, then I, it makes, gives you more confidence to bet the river. Because once I bet the flop, I'm more likely to have a king. Because I, because I check, check all the way, I, I didn't think that the betting of, of a king at the river is, is credible.
All right. Matt, just look at the statistics of betting the flop. Um, I could say this because I have the database that has these numbers. The average person calls a flop C bet about fifty percent of the time. If you bet one-third pot, they have to call seventy-five percent of the time just to make your bluffs break even. If they only call fifty percent of the time, you're automatically profiting any hand that you C bet.
Yep. I mean, what I'm thinking, and I don't, and it's because we're in no person's land here, is the range of hands that hold calls a three bet, I ranged pretty strong, maybe too strong. I, but that's why I, I just felt there was a high, very high probability that I get called, and then I'm in a tough spot on the turn, and I just didn't want to be there.
Hey, hey, what have I said before?
Go all in, go all in every time.
No, no, no. You've heard me say this, the best way to learn how to navigate spots that you feel are hard is to put yourself in spots that are hard thousands and thousands of times over. And then after you've been in this spot a thousand times, it's no longer hard.
I, I agree with him checking that, that flop as well in this case, just because we are in this weird, you know, spot where they're not supposed to be calling, but when they do, we, we put them on the pocket pairs, and we put them on suited connectors. And that board, they could have fours, pocket fours, pocket fives, pocket tens. They could have all of that stuff. Given that we don't know what they have going on. So I, I mean, I, I see the, the check.
But they can also have king, queen of diamonds. They can also have seven, eight of diamonds. They can also have pocket twos.
I get it. I just give them more of a nut advantage in that case.
Huh?
They have more nuts than we do. We don't have pocket fours, there are pocket fives, four or five. We don't have any of that stuff. So wouldn't they have the nut advantage?
Well, that's nut advantages has about how much we bet. That's why I bet small. The only reason I know this from experience is Larry can contest, can attest to this. I three bet too much. I three bet much more than solver. In fact, the hand I'm gonna show is a three bet that's not solver approved. But I know that my opponents are calling too wide. And they cannot defend their range on the flop properly.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, too.
So no matter what you have, you can make a profit on by three betting and C betting small.
Yeah, I'm a big fan. I've been working very hard to increase my three bet frequency. I think that's a great uh, just general plan. I think pretty much all of us should three bet more. Maybe not you, but but.
Are you telling me to find more three bets?
Sorry?
Are you telling me to find more three bets?
No, I said, that's why I said, maybe not you, because you just said you three bet too much. But yeah, but I think that, to me, like, the principle of this hand that I, I just wanted to bring was when it just goes check, 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 bet the river and they're gonna fold.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good, uh, takeaway. Well, and also, I think this this king is just so good for your range, right?
Yeah, the king makes a good card to bet.
So, so the story is totally believable. I've got two, I've got ace king or ace queen. Mostly ace king. I've got all combo, all sixteen combos of ace king that I threw that here. I checked it twice. Well, looky there, my ace king just hit. I mean, the story makes total sense. Also, king, queen makes sense. That's the story. And the king, queen mix.
And I don't think you can bet every river. I mean, you, you bet a two of diamonds, a six, that's torching if you were to bet those, those cards.
Larry.
Yes.
Let me share, I'll show my hand really quick.
Okay.
Because it's on the same topic.
While you're showing that, Joey, when you said you bet small on the flop, do you mean like a third, or do you mean like a quarter?
You, oh, usually about a third.
Okay, great.
Um, so we have this hand here. I'm in this, in the big blind with ace eight. I hope this is the hand. Yeah, so I three bet this. Maybe I should have gone a little larger, but I didn't.
Yeah, pretty small, Joey.
Yeah, I think I should have been around at least ten.
Maybe more out of the big blind.
Yep, ten, ten minimum.
You're gonna be sad to, to know, Joey, that, that three bet is solver approved.
Yeah, I, I thought it had some slivers. I wasn't sure.
It does. It's, it's, it's more than a slip. It's, it's like a quarter.
I, I wasn't sure and I didn't really care.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this guy's line was fifteen, fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
So he was kind of tight, but I still three bet him.
You want to show HUD real quick? In your, um,
Isn't that tighter as the more you want to feed bet him?
Oh, well, there it is.
Fourteen eleven.
Oh, yeah. That tight, I'm, yeah, I, I like three bet. I like it.
Oh, I'm wrong. That's no. Let me see, is it, is it, is it got even a sliver?
Let me.
I just would have folded it, which is fine.
But even if, even a tight player, they don't four bet often enough, he's only going to four bet like ace, king, aces and kings, maybe queens. And he's gonna have a lot of calls in here that he shouldn't have. So this isn't necessarily a good flop for me.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
Yeah, I think in theory, this is a high check frequency, but big bet low frequency.
But three bet, C bet.
But it works, so there you go. So.
We, I do this all the time.
Mm-hmm. So F theory, if it works, it works. And there you were even smaller than a third. Yeah.
I mean, the opponent's that tight. I, I just think that's, you know, you, you go aggressive versus a guy who's, who's, who's who's that type, because they're just not, very unlikely used to these kind of sizing, and they don't know what to do, so they overfold.
So he was in cutoff, right?
Yeah, you've got, there's a sliver. It's legal. I looked it up.
Nice.
I like the term. It's, it's legal.
So, yeah, so big line, like, so in theory, big line is supposed to three bet to quite a ridiculous size.
I thought most of these aces had at least a little bit down ace five. Even if I did it with a six off, I wouldn't care.
Yeah, I don't mind it.
It's not, it's not necessarily about getting the exact hands that were supposed to three bet.
Yep.
Like, if stuff around it is three betting, then, yeah, go ahead, do it.
Especially against your, the, the opponent type. If your opponent's a, like a maniac type, then I'll be more cautious. Yeah, but it, that, those, those numbers of your opponent, yeah, for sure. I like it.
Joey, I see. More inclined to three bet like seven, eight suited than ace eight offsuit. Uh, because I'm less likely to be dominated if called. What do you think about that?
Um, well, going back years ago before the solvers came out, there was a saying that poker started on the turn. Um, first of all, the thing about ace eight is it does block the better hands. It has some blocker qualities to pocket aces and ace king. Um, it does have blocker qualities to being dominated, but it can be dominated. So if I three bet and C bet and get any resistance, that's when I have to start thinking what do I do on the turn? If he, if he check raises me there, it'd be fine. Just let it go. You're gonna make so much profit just by three betting and C betting that when they play back at you, you can just let it go. But every once in a while, when they play back at you, you're gonna have the nuts.
Balance your check, man.
There's, there's so much value ma- made by just three betting and C betting that it pays for all the times they do fight back.
All right, guys, I got it. Oh, go ahead, sorry, Joe.
Yeah, my final thought is what I'm finding out is they're going to the flop with too wide of a range. They call too much when you three bet them.
That is something I think that we, we see commonly at lower stakes, yes. They, they want to see a flop, so they don't have a discipline to three bet folding.
I can share a, a, a hand too, but I'll.
Yeah, and when and when that's not true, and they don't, and they don't go to the flop without your, your, your initial, oh, too many three bets, makes a profit on the pre-flop by getting them to fold.
Oh, and last, last night when I played that hand, he folded so quick, I I think my bet just hit the table and he folded.
Yeah.
Live or online?
It was online. That's why it's in my hold of manager.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. When you said hit the table, I was like, huh, real table?
He probably had, he might have had the fold to any bet clicked.
That's just so bad, but that's a whole other story. Let's go on.
They give you credit. All right, guys, so you might, you might not like this overlimp, so we've got I got ace jacks, we have, we have a, uh, entry bet. This guy limps. Right? We've got a post. I like overlimping with this combo in position. I don't think I'd do this anyplace where I could potentially be out of position, but I think I like overlimping um, on button. Larry, I think you're not overlimping. I, I think that, I think your terminal, oh, wait, wait. The, was, was one of these, one of these guys limped in and then there was a post? Okay, you are over. Okay, there was a limp in a post. Fine, okay. Does anybody think this is a drastic overlimp?
No. Only if the lines are known to be aggressive.
Did you consider um, raising?
No, because I had a note, so the primary, um, villain in this is, uh, Yuki G is low jack. And I had a note that he, um, claims, claimed limp traps in the past.
Okay, if he's a tricky limper, yeah, fine.
Yeah, for this hand, can make the nut, so I like, I.
Too good, too good of equity, but you don't really, you can't really face a three bet, uh, 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 three bet, so that's great.
One last point, though, is that the second player in the pot did not voluntarily limp. So he still has almost full range.
Yeah. No, he, he didn't voluntarily limp, but he didn't raise the limp.
Right, that's what I said. He almost has full range except for the better stuff.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, he could be, he, he, he's got do seven offsuit, yeah.
So he has the bottom seventy-five percent of hands.
Right, right. I got it. I agree.
I, I may have raised this in game.
Mm-hmm.
Considering that. Yeah. Considering that player sixteen fifty-six is probably gonna fold a lot of his hands that he's stuck with right now.
Yeah, so this is all, yeah, the server limit is based on the fact this guy's got some trick. Yeah, so this is all, yeah, the server limit is based on the fact this guy's got some tricky, tricky map.
Yeah, tricky limper, yeah, I agree with this if he's a tricky limper.
Yeah, so I've got, I have that note on, on this guy. This guy's got the green tag and could be a little bit of people. Uh, but the price is that we now have an open ender. Uh, we're thirty percent to the nuts, five wins. He C bets, now it gets even more interesting. He raises, what are you guys doing here?
Hold.
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 Yeah, for you to fold.
Man, I am, uh, I am, so you guys have no consideration about pot odds? I mean, about implied odds? The action was reopened, but, but our implied odds against these guys is full stacks. We're drawing to the nuts on a rainbow board.
But you may not get to the turn. All it has to go is raise, call, you call behind. Either one of the open guys check raise, not likely, or player one, or a player eighty-nine twelve wasn't full of shit.
Well, then I drastically misplayed this hand, and so I want to ask you guys some more questions.
Right, let's go on.
Because I have, I obviously have a leak in my, I might have a leak in my, my thought process here.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm thinking. I've got eight cards to the absolute nuts.
But that's not, of course, that's not true. I mean, you, you could get beaten by a higher straight.
Jack queen, you're completely dominated, right? Or, or, yeah, unless it's a seven, but.
Queen jack, but I'm blocking the, I'm blocking the.
Yeah, queen jack's not bad.
The primary reason not to call is, is everyone says that the betting could, betting's been reopened. A sort of a tiebreaker is you're not, you know, you'd rather have jack queen here than eight jack.
Alright, then I, then I, uh, I butchered this hand, as you will see. I just, I, I might be overvaluing my draw then. Cause you're right, I'm drawing to the second nuts, not the absolute nuts. You've very good point. Cause someone could have queen jack and you're blocking, uh, blocking it. Um.
But it's really the betting sequence. That's the real problem here.
Yeah, yeah, I see you guys, this is hard for me to lay down, and this might be a leak on my part. Yeah, go ahead, Skip.
No, I didn't say this.
Okay. Um, okay, well then, I'm just, then the rest of the sand is embarrassing.
Alright, let's go.
So he goes crazy, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the worst case scenario. That's the worst case.
So our pot odds here are like thirty percent. The call. And we're thirty percent to hit. A straight given two cards.
No, when, when there's still stack left, you can't go flop to river. Your equity from flop to turn is like sixteen percent.
Okay, but that guarantees that it's continue aggression on turn, right? I mean, we're not guaranteed that.
Well, not guaran- we're not guaranteed that, but.
I mean, he, he.
You have to take that into consideration. You, when there's betting left, you cannot use flop to river equity to figure out your pot odds.
Okay, unless you shove, unless you shove, unless you shove.
What about implied odds, right? Do we have significant implied odds here to this bet?
Yes.
Sure you do. But not enough.
You have, you have his full stack of implied odds left.
Yeah, so I think we've got implied odds here too.
You do.
Our odds here are like, our pot odds that he's giving us are thirty percent.
Okay, how often, say the turn card is a seven.
Okay.
How often are you stacking him?
That's a pretty hidden straight to, uh, a recreational. I like, I would call here with this rap straight draw more than I would a flush draw. Because this rap straight draw is not entirely obvious if you're a casual player.
I agree. I, I think it's good implied odds here. I agree with that assessment. Not an easy, I've seen plenty of people miss that.
Okay.
Cause you, you, you need sixteen percent. You got thirty, so you, you must get forty more big blinds out of him. And that's not a guarantee. If you get, if you get his stack half of the time, you're just breaking even.
And you, you, his bet is so strong, a straight's not invulnerable. He could have a set here, you make your straight and then get build up on the river. Uh, he could have a higher straight, you know, so yeah, I do think you have, everything you said about the rap straight is right. Your implied odds are good. But I don't think they're good enough.
I just, I think people overestimate pot odds. With, cause they say, oh, he's got enough stack left, but you also have taken consideration, how often are you getting that stack? When you hit.
Absolutely.
And when you remain the best hand after the river card.
Joey, the way you framed it, I agree with. So I think to answer your question, if you spike a seven on the turn, will you get an additional forty big blinds half the time? Yeah, I think.
No, he needs forty big blinds a hundred percent of the time to break even. He needs pretty much his whole stack half of the time.
Yeah, will you get the whole stack half the time? Yeah, pretty close, um, but you can get out draw, I mean, it, it you're, yeah, I just keep saying the same thing. Yeah, you, you do have implied odds. Your implied odds are good. But I don't think they're good enough.
Alright. This is, this, I'm too stationary in the situation.
Will you, anyone consider shoving here?
No. No, he's got aces, kings are set.
I'm actually considering shoving because, I, I mean, I mean, it sounds lops and nuts, like you, if you shove, you're guaranteed that you, you got two chances to hit your hand. Right, turn river. So. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a great move. I'm just saying that I would consider shoving of this hand.
So what NFL team are you punning for?
This, I mean, you'd have to, it would make sense if this was ever a bluff. Um, we're blocking his most obvious bluff with his queen jack. This is, this is track aces, kings are set.
Gotcha.
Eight, I would say eighty-five percent of the time.
Two pair also.
See, I think the problem with shoving is he's never folding.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're not giving, you're just not, it's not profitable. The thirty percent you hit is not profitable enough.
He bet into four people. Then re-raised a raise. After he bet into four people with three people still left in.
Yeah, it's.
Into three people.
That means his hand is so strong that he almost never, that, that, yeah, who never even considered folding. Then that, then that's it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm on team set of fours. I don't know about you guys.
Um, I'm not on team set of fours. I include nine, ten there, but.
Yeah, nine, ten's in there.
Yeah, nine, ten's in there, but, but here's the thing. I believe that in this, in this situation, you are going to, when you make your straight, you are gonna get his whole stack seventy, eighty, ninety percent of the time. And here is why, and one of the reasons I believe this is because of the argument you guys are all making now, which is, he's never folding to a jam. He's got a set, he's got two pair. He, all, all the reasons we can put him that's strong is why we're gonna get his whole stack if we make a straight in this exact situation. We're in position.
Oh, I've always, I, I agree with that. Like, that's what I'm saying, like, if he calls, like, y- 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 if he ca- you, you know, you call here, like, you're, you're getting a stack. He is that, that's strong, then, then, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see him backing out. Any seven or queen, he's not backing out. He's committed.
Yeah.
Let me run something in, um. Poker, poker, yeah, Equilab. If he only has sets, what is your equity?
Like, like, I literally got it, I, I just, I just pulled it all in there just to make sure that we have, we have the least considered it. Like, I kind of knew it was probably a bad move, but I want to know why it's a bad move, right?
Why, what's a bad move?
Shove.
Well, put yourself in the other player situation.
No, I already know, I already know, I already know. You, you convinced me, already, already. I just want to bring that up, is I want to make sure we, we covered that, that possibility.
Are you running it?
Yeah.
I already had it, actually. I already did it. Yeah, we don't, we don't have it. If you give, if we give him sets, we're done for.
Take the turn portal.
We're right, we're right there. We're right there.
Which means. Sir.
Yeah, since I'm going back and forth, man, now that I'm seeing this, I'm like, I think, I think call makes sense. I think.
Ace kings, just give him the ace king, um, trap, which I think he has a lot. His sets. And a couple, uh, flush draw. Bluffs.
There's no, there's no flush.
There's no bluffs.
Wait, there's no fours there.
If there's no buffs, we're, we're.
There's four, four. There's four, four.
If it's, if it's just value, then, yeah. There's just value.
Add fours in too.
I, I don't think that changes.
It's not gonna change it.
It'll make it a little worse for us.
Yeah, well, and, and jack queen.
Nah.
Around the same thing.
What about ten, nine? Ten, nine?
Ten, nine.
So what happened? Let's see what happened.
Yeah, the answer is to fold three. Um, so I called and then then, then it gets more interesting, right?
This is problematic.
Oh, God.
I, I just sold it.
Yeah, congratulations, Larry, you created your hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Right, and that, and that right there is, is what we meant wa- with the thing which of, you're gonna get to see one card.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna realize my equity.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's also why, if, and it's also why, Larry, that you were gonna get his whole stack, because if your hand includes seven, eight here. You know, he jam, he jammed on a straight completing card. You were getting his whole stack.
Yeah, he doesn't care.
Yeah, I was, no, no, he bet it. He bet on a, he bet on a straight completing card.
Well, I guess the point is he doesn't care what, what the turn was. He was gonna put it.
Exactly. He's betting.
So this is something I have to work on. This is very hard for me to fold.
Yeah, that's a fold. That's a fold.
This is very hard for me to fold. I have to work on this.
If it's a call. Well, once the pot is reopened, you can't call with this.
Yeah, I hear you. So, I gotta work on this.
I think it's interesting if the first player checked. If one player in front of you bet, I think you still have to fold. Even if there was no bet and a raise, I think you just fold this. Multiway like this.
The, the, the fact that there's a, 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 a bet and a raise, that's what does it for me. Bet, raise, I was like, no way. You're not causing the action and like, the, like, you gotta, they gotta think like, what is the, the, the both of those guys can have, like, either one of those can re-raise. Right? Either the, 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 the guy who bet two and the guy gets six, they both can re-raise, so.
One person that's in front of you, you've got four other players that can reopen once you call.
Well, no, if it went bet call, there's one player left that can reopen the action.
You have the big blind and the, and the, uh, who's player seventy-eight, forty-five, big blind.
If, if it went bet call, I'd be on board with a call.
Yes, I agree. Bet call, I'll be on board.
It's so good.
I mean, I think the principle here is getting caught in the middle between two aggressors when you're on a draw is bad. You don't want to be there.
I hear you clearly. This is, I'm gonna have to work on, on my mindset here. This is just a call.
Yeah, even with the heart and so many people, yeah.
I was too focused on implied odds.
Right. Now.
And especially implied out of this hand, because it's a hidden straight. And I was just reading about those in an article a couple days ago.
Now, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna make, give you one thing, though, with a draw where I think you might consider calling even with this. Which is make it the nine, ten of hearts. Make it that ridiculous of a draw. That changes everything.
Oh, that's what I'm saying, if it's nineteen of hearts, I'm even, I'm even bet, bet myself.
Yeah, sure. You can, you can jam right there yourself and what do you care?
Well, nineteen of hearts, you've got, again, heads up, you've got fifty-five percent equity. But I would imagine multi-way, it's pretty close.
What if it was ten, nine, nine, and it went bet call?
Yeah.
Cause you're not, you're not even drawing to the nuts anymore.
Yeah.
This was.
Nuts anymore. See, the thing here is, e- even if they have pocket tens, you can still outdraw and beat what is the nuts on the flop.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. This, I, but I can totally see where this is a fold. Alright, that was an eye-opening experience for me. I'm gonna stop sharing and hand it over to someone else.
Yep. One of the things I really like about that hand you showed Larry was that the thing that we all panicked about before seeing the turn, saying, no, 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 he might, he might, uh, four bet it, and then he did.
I know.
Anybody have any more hands they want to share?
I do, but I think.
Yeah, there's a few people in chat that have hands.
I only saw one hand in chat.
So, why don't you go ahead and share yours? Do you have a link? I'll go, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go after Mike.
Okay, um. Everybody see Jack, Jack?
Yeah, can you make that bigger, though?
Yep. How's that?
Alright, that's good.
Okay, so this is a strange one pre-flop and wanted to see what you guys do here. Um, so we have a limper. An overlimp. What's the size?
Three, four, five and a half, six and a half.
And a half or seven, if you feel like it.
Yep, so I actually. I do even bigger, but I'm crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did.
Yeah, that's good.
It's fine. That's fine.
So good.
Also, your D person is an argument.
Um, here's where it really gets weird. So we get the backer.
I don't think you can four bet here, though. I would like lean towards calling here.
This player, I've had a few hands, uh, hasn't done anything unusual. Has been somewhat decent, decently solid.
Yeah.
I, I can't see them.
There exists second hand low, but this is such a weird situation to do it in.
I jam, no?
I'll, I'll play more cautious here. I don't, I don't think it's, it's jammable.
So he's claiming ace is a king, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, exactly. You're basically hoping he has ace, king.
Right, yeah.
I'm like, I don't know if I want to sham, you hope he has ace, king, it only ace, king.
I'm, I'm hoping to have ace, king, pocket tens.
Uh, I'm gonna shock you and fold.
Really?
That's, that's too nitty for me. I, I will call, I will call.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a very large prop raise, but I think we, I think this hand's too good to call.
Too good to fold, you mean?
Sorry, too good to fold.
Yeah. Yeah, I, 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 I can't justify four bet or shove, so I, I think it's too good to fold, so I only have one option.
Yeah.
The thing is, uh, you have the implied odds to call and try to flop a set.
Like, like, if your opponent's VP is like, like, seven percent, like, he's like, seven, then I can fold.
I disagree with the implied odds to set mine.
Yeah, it's not big enough. He needs, he should have a hundred and forty or at least a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, after he made a twenty-one, yeah, we need, um, we need to have, what, how much under stack, Joey?
Well, we gotta call.
Number two are calling thirteen and a half.
We're out of, we're out of position. We need fifteen to one pot odds to set mine out of position.
Yeah.
And we're getting like four to one or five to one.
Right. But we do get to count the money that's already in the pot for that, so that's six to one, but it's, but six to one is still not fifteen to one.
Yeah, we, we need like, what, like three hundred under stack or something, or both are stacks. You are saying fifteen, I had the idea, you only needed ten. For some reason, I had this idea.
Is the minimum for in-position set mining. When you're out of position, you have equity realization issues, so you need more.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure. He started to stack the opponent out of position.
He started to stack the opponent out of position even when you hit.
And even if ten to one, he, his stack isn't large enough for ten to one.
Yeah.
I mean, it is if you consider the money that is already in the pot. It's barely, but.
Now.
He, he, he would need, he would need to have a hundred and fifty big blinds to start. At the pot to justify these fifteen that we're about to put in. It's fourteen, sorry, thirteen and a half, thirteen and a half. He needs a hundred and thirty to start with, and he's got, he starts with one twenty-seven. One seventeen.
So with that argument, then, uh, we need to either for-bet or fold, is that right?
No, um, I just said we don't have the pot odds to purely set mine. I think, I think we call here.
I, I think, I think we, like, like, he may do this with tens and nines. Like, like, he might, but, but the time's that he has, you know, you, you balance it out, right? He has enough hands, like combos that beat us. And only some that, 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 that lose, so that is, is, yeah, I wanna see a flop. I, 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 I think.
I, I agree. I'm confused. I don't know what to do, like either jam or call, but it's like, is he really gonna trap ace and kings this way? Is he gonna limp them then re-raise when? Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think.
Early position as opposed to late position on a button. This is what's so rare.
He limped behind. I don't think we can consider aces and kings too, that strong of a part of his range.
Yeah.
Rarely, we're, once in a while, we're gonna run up against one of those weird players that has it some small percentage at a time. But this will almost never be aces or kings. Because he limped behind on the button.
This is a super strange play.
It is strange play.
So then like, so, and it's not a jam pre-flop.
It, it looks more like the middle pair.
That, 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 I think, I think if it's strange like that, I will even more likely go call. I want to, I want to play against this guy.
All right, don't we wanna jam then in that case? And have him call?
No, but then, no. Because I think you can.
If you jam, he only calls you with better hands. So doesn't make a lot of sense.
Exactly. If he jam, he'll never call you worse. He'll only call you better. Then there's no point.
He's, he's putting.
So here's, skate, here's what I think happens. I, I think the appeal of the jam here is when you jam and he folds, you feel good. You didn't have to make any more decisions. You didn't have to see an ace on the flop. You didn't have to face a difficult, because the, the flop and turn play of this hand is gonna be difficult. We know that. And if you jam, it's not difficult. But that's not a good enough reason to do it.
Yeah. That's what I have to work on. I used to be like that. I used to jam here a lot to avoid making, having to deal with tough decisions.
Exactly.
If you wanna be a great poker player, you have to be able to work with those.
Yeah.
Can't avoid these things like, like, like the plague.
Because when you jam here, you are, you are hoping so badly that he does not insta-call with his aces, kings, queens, right? You're almost hoping that he has ace king. So what you're hoping for is so you get to flip. You're hoping to flip for, you know, a hundred and ten, you know, you know, a hundred and ten big blinds, two hundred and twenty big blinds. That's what you're hoping for. Because when he has the lower hand, sevens, eights, nines, tens that he plays this way for some reason, those are easy folds for him. So you're making it easy for him to fold perfectly.
I, I think, I think it starts with my confidence and maybe a leak of mind where I say, oh, this is what this player has because he played it this way this, this time.
The only good thing that can happen, not the only, I mean, I'm exaggerating a little bit, but the only good thing that can happen if you jam here is that he folds an ace king or an ace queen suited.
Yep, yep. I would jam here if. I would jam here if I know that my opponent is stronger than me.
What did you say, Pun? I, I, I talked over you.
Sorry.
No, you go.
No, I was saying that, one condition I would jam here is if I'm playing like Daniel Legrande, like somebody is really strong, like I know that I'm gonna get crushed. Like normally, like nine times out of ten to see a flop or turn. If I'm playing somebody significantly stronger than me, then I would, I would more consider jamming here. Because I don't want, you know what I mean? Like, I don't, I, I know that I'll be at a disadvantage if I see, if I have to go with complex flop play.
But also, I think we're in cash. Um. Jamming makes more sense as a tournament thing. But in cash, to me, it's just a little bit spewy. Um.
Well, I didn't say, like, I'm the, I'm basically the big guy who said to call. So I said, I will only even consider jamming if I'm playing that, like Daniel Legrande. If he's sat on a table and he's in that position and he does something weird like that, yeah, change tables. But if I have no choice, I have to play a very strong player that who's been dominating, then I may just.
Okay.
I don't know.
But that's rare. And this guy definitely does not give, get me that vibe.
I mean, I've sat and played with some pretty good players. I, I'm not really intimidated by better players. I might, I might be a little over optimistic, but I feel I can play them.
Yeah, I think, I, I, you, I think Scotty made a very good point about kind of the emotional, the, the, the shove. I've been watching a little bit of Peter Clark lately, and he talks a lot about how we need to make sure that we're not consciously. Making choices because unconsciously we don't want to face tough decisions.
Right.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I say I will only do it when I know I, my opponent is, is killing me on, on, on post-flop play.
Okay.
So we do the same thing with queens then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And we go broke with kings against aces.
Yep.
So this is not.
All right, let's see, let's see what happened.
But as I said, we'll call. Yeah, that's it. Oh.
Yep.
The trap bastard.
Yeah.
Yeah, limp, limp, re-raise, yeah.
There exists some.
With the king, with the king on the flop, we may not have one in the hand, but we weren't gonna lose our stack.
Yep, that's right. I'll be very cautious once that king shows. I'll be very cautious. He bets, I'll likely.
So will he. You think he's gonna triple barrel the rest of his stack with a king on the board?
That's right. That's right. That's right. I, I agree. That's right. This, you know, I like calling because like in this exact scenario, even if you lose, you're not, you're likely not losing your whole stack.
Can you go back to, um, right after he raised? Let's see what the SPR is. Right after he puts in his, his trap rates.
It probably would have been about three to one, two to one.
Yep.
So let's quickly here. Talk about, yeah, it's three to one, uh, point three. Let's talk about what our shoving range is. Are, are you guys shoving ace king here?
Uh, most likely, yes.
I think there's an argument for ace king, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Blocking aces, blocking kings.
What, okay, we're out of position, right? So then I think kings fall into our shoving range too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, kings for sure.
I think the only question for me is queens and aces. I think aces out of position, I think we, do we put in a? Free bet or do we shove or do we, I don't think we slow play out of position with aces.
No, no, aces, I, I will, I will definitely bet out of position.
Weird, because the limp, the limp re-raise, you know, is supposed to indicate, like somebody said this earlier, aces, kings or ace king. If you have aces. It means he doesn't have aces. I, so there's an argument there, I think, for slow playing, even though you're out of position, because if you think he has. Actually, I don't take it back. I don't freaking know.
I think that you have a good point. And also, I think you have a good point too. Because once you put in your, your bet, you, you, you cover them. Once you put your bet in, we're at. Fifty big blinds and our SPR is less than two. So I think when we get to an SPR of less than two, now we're looking at slow play allowed territory.
Yes.
Right? Because not so playing out of position is all based on the fact of equity realization. You're gonna realize your equity less out of position. However, that is mitigated by the SPR. So I think slow playing aces is a, is a fine play here. Tell me if I'm crazy.
No, watch it. Just, oh, you're right. I didn't think about that. Like when, the, the, the lower the SPR, the less position matters.
Yes. Yes, our, our out-of-position equity realization issues go away with aces at this SPR significantly.
No, that makes sense. Didn't even think of that.
So, uh, yeah, I think aces is a slow play, kings is a pure shove, and ace king is a pure shove, and I don't know what the hell it is, too. But who does?
I, I agree with everything except for the part that if, uh, Matthew said that if we have aces, they can have aces. Well, I disagree. There's two, there's still two aces left and they can have aces, thank you.
Yeah, it's a probability.
Sure.
And you don't care, and also you don't care. If they have aces and you don't have a, and you have aces, you could have both folded pre-flop and you're gonna have results. You're getting.
Well, you have a better result because you're not paying break.
Yeah, except, except that they have the heart and it comes all hearts.
Folding your aces. Yeah. It's a null.
Yeah, depending on the flop.
Yeah, but you're absolutely right. They can have aces.
And what really, what really threw me too is that, uh, you know, it was a back raise, right? It wasn't a limp re-raise, it was a limp, limp.
Yeah.
Back raise, which, like, we're all, we're all shoving ace king because we block aces, we block kings. Well, now that he back raises, I feel like aces and kings are pretty discounted after the, after he limps behind.
Yeah.
That he has somewhat discounted.
They're discounted, but remember, people my age, um, remember something that was at, that was, that was done so often that it had a name and it's called second-hand low. It's a standard way to play aces. It's no, it's no longer done it because the solver wouldn't ever do it. Um, but, but it used to be done. And he could just be an old guy. Um, second-hand low is not done very often in this configuration. Cut-off button where it's just so easy for no one to raise after you. But it got done, you know, lowjack, hijack, lowjack cutoff, people did it. And if you've never heard it, it is when you have aces and you're the second in the pot, you call whether they limp or whether they raise. And there's enough people out there who are, who will try to squeeze you because you've, you're presenting a capped range and you're not capped.
Yeah, I mean, definitely. I mean, definitely as a player. I mean, so I'll.
I, and then no limit be, started becoming popular.
Yes, yes.
That was limit poker.
Was it? Okay.
Yep. Let's see, uh, let's see Prime's hand.
Okay.
All right, so, sounds good. So mine's a live hand, but I recorded the, 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 the hand, so give me a second. Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna post it in chat. And I will stop at the hero action. So, yeah, I'm just gonna post it and I'll, I'll add some color to the commentary here.
So you can post the whole thing if you want.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll post, yeah, yeah. So, so first decision is, you know, pocket jacks, funny enough. Um, I don't know why he didn't post that, but he's jack of heart and jack of, yeah, I'll just put it, jack of heart, jack of diamond.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a one-one-two game, is a home game, and people are, are loose, like. This, the one-one is basically, what, it's basically suggestions, like, if I've seen like where the game at the end is like, you know, like. Seven, eight grand in the, in, 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 you know, a month, like in, in on the table.
Right.
Like, oh, boy. Yeah, like, like, I, I've seen one, two, or one, three play tighter than this, okay? So this is like, you know. Okay, so, and the, the main villain, which is on, he's the hij, the hijack. He and I played a lot of our hands, like we were good friends, and he and I both like can go, you know, known to get, get a little nut crazy and, and things like that. So he's perfectly capable of making moves with like less than premium hands, like.
Gotcha.
So there's one, there's a straddle and, you know, you know, like, yeah, like you said, there's the action there, you read that. And, uh, what, what, what would you do?
So the pot's ten bucks to you?
Re-bet him.
Yeah.
Re-bets.
Yeah, how much?
Eight, because you're in the big blind, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-six, so to not be a, to not be a jerk, thirty.
Hmm. Funny enough.
Thirty-six to thirty.
That's exactly why the, I, 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 I raised to, to the, the thirty, so I free bet the thirty.
I like it.
All right, cool. So that doesn't take much of a discussion, sounds right. Okay, good.
Yeah, you can also call though, too.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, I think with this particular player, I feel like I, I, I don't wanna give him the bet, the, the, the betting lead. I don't wanna give him the, the, the advantage. Um, you know, especially I'm also out of position. That's probably one of my reasons why leaning towards three bet than a call. So that's all.
While a call is okay, I'm gonna argue that, that the three bet is even better because the call invites, uh, the under the gun straddle in, and now you're.
Exactly.
Being out of position against two hands. Great.
Okay, so we're heads up, there's sixty-two dollars in the pot, and what happens?
Okay, so, uh, I'll, I'll show the flop and then we'll talk about hero action. This is the flop. Um, I, I don't know why the, okay, it's, yeah. It's seven of club, eight of club, ten of heart.
Okay. All right.
So what does Hero do? This is funny, right? It's exactly what studying, right? Out of position with overpair. Jack. All right. Uh, yeah, so I like.
Bet half, I'm check half the time, and when you bet, bet a, bet a third, don't bet, don't bet a half pot in this because it's got locked up equity.
Yeah, I'd even bet less than that if you wanna bet, but same principle.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So it's either you check or you bet like, what, twenty bucks, like one-third essentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
All right, so I'm, I'm like a three-bet, C-bet guy, as you know. But this is one of the worst boards that could have flopped against you. Because this smacks his calling range really hard.
Yeah, I don't love it. I can tell you that.
And even when you're ahead, you're ahead against ten, nine, and nine, eight.
I think. I think I might wanna check here.
Yeah, I want to check.
Cause I don't wanna play. I'm not happy about getting my stack in at all.
Oh, God, there's no way I'm getting my stack in. I'll fold.
Oh, yeah, tough, tough day. Like, I was thinking along those, like, I don't. Here's the, the thing, those, I, because my opponent here is very, can be very aggressive, and a lot of times when I show weakness, he will bet into it. I, I feel like I want to keep his, like, my own fathers. I wanna keep his, some of his lower, like, bluffy hands in here. So I don't, that's why I wind up checking. I don't, I, I, I wanna see what he does. I want him to, 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 to give him a rope, to try to, 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 to bet into me.
That seems great.
And then see what happens, right? So I check.
Okay, um, I'm looking at a solution right now.
Yep.
Oh, wait, it's too deep. I need to bring it down. So under the gun raise.
I would love to see the, the, the solution, the, the, the solver here.
Call. Ten of hearts, seven of clubs, eight of clubs?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't have a heart, right? I, I don't have a heart. Jack of, sorry, I don't have a club, sorry. Jack of heart, jack of diamonds in my hand, right? So I don't have a club either. I would be more happier if I have a, have a club, jack of club in my hand.
I'm gonna expect that the jack of clubs check, the jack-jack mixes and the jack with the jack of clubs, it checks more often than without the.
This is our, this was our pre-flop decision. It mixes, call and raise.
Ah.
Uh, what, how are you, how are you dealing with the, uh, with the fact that you've got three blinds?
Huh?
How are you?
This is straddle, right?
This is a straddle, this is a straddle solution.
Oh, it's gonna straddle.
Yeah, that's good, good.
Okay, fabulous.
And then on this flop. It, it kinda mixes.
Yeah.
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 No. Yep. Makes sense, makes sense. No, it's great. So I check. And then as, uh, as I alluded to earlier, I, I, opponent likes to bet. And especially when I, uh, show weakness, he does bet. So villain bets thirty. Decision time.
Thirty into what?
Uh, sixty-three.
Little over sixty with basically half pot.
Yep, basically half pot.
Call.
Call.
Check raise.
Check raise, all right.
Yeah.
With some calls.
Okay.
And you have a particular combo?
Yeah, uh, no club, no club.
Yeah, you need the club to, to call more often. It wants to call more often. That's what.
Wow, okay. That's really interesting. Okay, wow. Yeah.
But you, you called?
No, did not, did not call. Because I said before, I played this villain enough times to know that. He, he, his rate, or my suspicion, my suspicions that his raise range, his, his bet range, sorry, is more than. He, he, his rate, or my suspicion, my suspicions that his raise range, it is bet ring, sorry, is more than, than GTO. So if he, if he bring more of a more trashier stuff, then, and I'm out of position. And I, and I don't have a club. So I'm, I'm thinking like, I don't really, the more, my, my opinion is that I don't really want to. Um, there are a lot of hands I don't want to see, right? Anything higher than jack, I don't want to see. I don't want to see another club. And even a hand like, 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 like nine will be good, obviously for me. So I, so I, so I block some of the straights, um. Straight draws, right? Like, you know, because I, I have a jack, I have two jacks actually, right? So I'm going, but the things that I have, there's just enough hands I don't. Want to see that will make my life very difficult and I'm out of position against a player who's fully capable of. Of, of making my life difficult on a turn. I decided to three bet.
Okay.
So three bet ninety.
Alright, so it's about half pot.
Yeah.
No, I, oh, yeah, I raised ninety total. Yeah, so, so I did that and well, man, I'm just gonna, your opponent, opponent, opponent folds when he was humming and hawing. For like, he tanked like two minutes. Before he decide, finally decided to, to fold. And when he was folding, he was literally going. Yo, queens? Like he was guessing high queens or jacks. That's like he was, but, but, but he was humming, it's like that's supposed to like, you know, tank for a while and they wind up folding. So I guess it turns out this was a pretty, this worked out pretty well.
Everything you did was self approved in some ways.
Nice. Because I wasn't sure, like, like, like one part of it was like, is that check raise too aggressive? But I'm like, ah, I just. You know? Like it's just one of those like, uh, you know, no club, out of position against an aggressive player that will likely bet there with a. Fairly bad, big variety of hands that I, that I, um, so I was likely thinking I, I'm good. I'm like ahead a fair bit, like sixty, seventy percent there, but there are a lot of cards I don't want to see on the, on the turn.
That seems reasonable. Joey, would you show one thing on that hand before we moved on? Um, when we, um, with our, with our, uh, initials, uh, on the, on the flop. With our jacks, just, just hover the jacks. I wanted to see the sizing on the jacks. The two sizes the jacks take are. I'm, I'm not very good with your colors.
Um, the main sizings are fifty percent and seventy-five percent.
Okay, so I was wrong. I was wrong. I thought this was going to be small bet because of the locked up equity. And it has locked up equity, but. We blocks one of the pieces of it. We blocked the straight. Is that why we think that we get to bet so big?
Yeah, we blocked the nuts.
Okay.
The nuts would be jack nine suited.
Yeah, sorry. And we blocked the nuts.
Cause he doesn't, he shouldn't have jack nine off.
Alright, okay.
And let's see. How much he actually has jack nine suited.
Oh, I know what to do. Uh, take a look at.
He might have like one combo, jack nine.
Take a look at, uh, take a look at like queens.
For who?
Don't, for us, where we don't block it. So it's, it's an over pair, but it doesn't block. I want to see what, what does it do on sizes?
Um. Thirty-three, fifty-five for the most part.
Okay, yeah, it's because of the blocker. Alright.
So I guess if you block the nuts, you're more confident in betting bigger because you, you, your opponent's just less likely to dominate you.
Okay, good. I'm happy now.
Alright, cool. That's good to know.
Hey, Prime. Hey, uh, I got another one if you'd like. I just wanted to kind of tell prime about a, um, a site that we use here. Matthew used it, but it's. It's called, uh, Easy Replayer and, um, you can enter hands in there and it makes it really good. Um, visually for everyone to be able to kind of follow along and, and look, check, check it up. It's pretty easy.
Actually. Um. Matt's hand that we looked at earlier. Um, let me. This hand is an easy replayer. You set it up and then we just, we could just go through the hand like this. And see everything graphically, so it's easier to follow.
I put a link in, uh, chat if you want to check it out, fine. So Mike, you have a hand, right? I have a hand as well, but you go first.
Uh, this is probably one of my, uh. Few hands, but I wanted to see what you thought. So. We got a limp. We got an ISO. And ace eight suited in the small blind.
Bald.
Yeah, this is out of position. I think you, I think I. Think I fold. It's, it's really sexy though. I, I can get flying it. I mean, you make, you make the nuts. Three percent of the time. And stack people.
I've never called here, but I, I, I ISOed and that's why I was.
I like that more.
If you ISO, that's better than. Like I'm not going to ever. Disagree with somebody's aggressive three bet.
And it's a squeeze as opposed to just a flat ISO. So you are squeezing here.
The, the thing is people think we're supposed to squeeze wider. But we actually three bet less often. When there's a call.
That's a lot of dead money out there. I mean, not.
If, if you look at the solver. Once there's a call, we tighten up our, our squeeze range. As if. As opposed to our regular three betting range versus a single player.
I like your sizing too. I think this is good sizing.
You're saying a squeeze needs to be tighter than an ISO?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Makes sense. So you get one caller, not the initial limper.
Yeah, the original razor.
Uh, this is the original rate. That's right. Okay.
Um, at this point now, I'm thinking. We have the over pair advantage. Now they can have some over pairs to this board, but we've got the over pair advantage. Feels like if I'm going to see bet. That I can. Kind of go somewhat big and look to get stacks in, in two streets. And represent basically what I'm, you know, what I'm representing. So I did go kind of half pot here. Objections?
The one thing that argues against the half pot is we do bet smaller on paired boards.
Yep, good call.
But the rest of the logic is sound.
Yeah, I, we don't need to go much over ten here.
Paired boards that are. That are, that have the small cards. Maybe this isn't small enough, right?
Well, I like that you have the eight. I like that you're blocking eight, seven. That's great. But if he had, if he raised with seven, six, he gets to call with seven, six. He doesn't raise with seven, six very often against two limpers, does he? I would, I would expect more limp behinds. Well, so it isn't a, the, the pair isn't a very. Um, well represented pair. I mean, it's not deuces, but it's.
That's a single race pot. Theory though, also.
Which one?
Um. That we get to bet larger sometimes with smaller pairs on the board.
Okay.
Um. I think like the SPR is less than two to one here. So that in itself is going to drive our bet sizing down.
Okay.
And when I was, when I was teaching about the three bets. If you remember, the one conclusion is his range is going to be too wide. He's going to have too many calls, especially on a paired board. If you just bet ten here, he cannot defend.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good exploit.
A live player will not be able to defend against a bet of ten here.
You can't defend a, a jack.
Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
You can't defend ace, queen, ace, jack, ace, king.
I'm not saying you can't. But what does he do with his ten, nine, his? Jack nine, his pocket threes, his pocket twos, all the hands that he shouldn't have been there with. That he still has. Ace, two of clubs.
So this is kind of an interesting situation because.
Like what, what is he going to do with all those hands?
Well, he's got an interesting range because he ISOed the original limper. And now he's calling a. Three bet to his ISO. So this is kind of a. This is a more condensed range. This is not an RFI range.
Yeah, but he still should have like suited aces that ISO. He should have Broadway cards at ISO.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. It's just a little, I think it's just, I think we have to look at the, the range as condensed, right? Cause he's now, cause he. Like I said, he, he ISOed and now he called a three bat, so. Well, he's a little. He's tighter than a recreational to. Raise first in and then cause your three bet.
Okay, if we bet ten, he has to defend eighty percent of his range.
He's not going.
Do you think anybody's going to defend eighty percent of the range there, especially if they're a little bit too wide for? The action that happened.
Well, I think you're making a good argument, especially if he's too wide. Why don't you give it the caveat that he's too wide? It kind of answers the question. I'm not, I, I think, I think that your adjustment to sizing is a good adjustment, Joey, and I, I think it's, I think it's a good. It's a good way to play three bet pots. And allows you to play more three bet pots, knowing that people call too wide. Cause they want to see a flop. They are too wide at flop. And so your, your C bet small. Overperforms. I think that's an excellent, excellent adjustment.
But this guy doesn't fold.
So what happens?
Uh, he flats.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we give up? Do we continue to tell the story? Now we're at a one to one, little less than one to one.
He's got a pretty filtered range here, right? For the reason I, I made the argument before. That I think it's a little bit more condensed. And two, big sizing. B fifty on flop. What's he continuing? What's he's continuing with? And this isn't really a card that changes once. He, his eights and nines get nervous now, right? Uh, a little bit because the ten, an overcard came to them. He still has jacks. Um. I actually. Your SPR is awkward here, right? You've already made a filtering size on flop. I, I frankly would lean towards a give up.
Yeah, if you bet only ten. The pot is sixty and you have eighty left.
Yeah.
So it gives you a little more room. To make a move on this ten, which is probably a better card for you than it is for him.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a give up for me.
If we have eighty left and the pot is sixty, we could still go twenty, thirty.
By the way, do we know his, his whole cards? Are you able to see them at the end?
Uh, yeah, so.
Yeah, he calls them down.
We don't know this guy.
Oh.
Oh, there he goes. He folded.
Good.
Well played. Whoa.
Oh my God. If you're getting him the full queens, that's incredible.
I am moving to ignition. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm gonna max out my slot bonus.
Yep, I am.
That's another unseen benefit of three betting. When you double barrel, they almost think you must have aces and kings.
And especially in a two street game. This, uh, I think I call queens here. I think I call queens here.
Yeah, I call queens too.
Yeah. Yep. If you're going to call queens pre flop. You're not. It is not time to fold the queens, boy.
Yeah, so like results wise, it's, it was good, but again, I kind of wanted to check to see what you guys thought about the sizings. And. You know, I wanted to get to that one to one. Whether it would be on the turn or the river or a jam, because you know, ace eight just isn't going to show down, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Well, the thing about going smaller. Like going three E instead of two E. Gets you. A third opportunity to make him fold.
But also makes it more likely that he calls down because each of the bets is smaller.
Yeah.
The advantage of three E is three E is a really good way to get him to pay off when you have aces.
But it's also a balance too.
Yeah, yeah. I don't mean it's bad. I just, you know, there, that's your other. I'm glad he folded queens here. I don't want to base my strategy on getting people to fold queens.
That's right.
But.
I think that's a safe way to put it.
Congratulations.
I mean, I, I like the naked aggression. But. The question becomes how much a population will overfold. Um, I've got a hand, let someone else has one. So there we go. Scotty's on it.
Yep, because you guys don't see enough of my hands. Alright. There we go. This is the fast game.
Three bet.
Alright, next time. So this is a three bet candidate.
I was looking at this. It's like, oh my God, we're going to see it.
Yep. Well, this is also an older hand. This is before we had the conversation.
Oh, okay.
But, uh. Let's see.
It, it, I can tell you, queen ten off is gonna be.
Blind. Big blind versus the cutoff, queen ten. Um, it's not one of my three bets. It's one of my. Currently. Queen jack is contentious, but.
I don't have a list of hands that I three betting that hands that I don't.
I know. I do now. I may adjust later, but I'm going to do this for a while. But this is we played.
I like an X R.
This is probably, this is probably enough to check raise, right?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, the king's really good for him, but I think solver will X R here. At some frequency.
Some frequency.
Think you can call too.
Yeah, you can do both. Oh, it's a broken stack too, right?
I have this question here.
You're going to have some donks on that eight too, I think. Uh, no, no, never mind.
Yeah, yeah.
The king has to be a queen.
Yeah.
Or a nine, a nine would have some donks.
Yeah, it's, well, the nine helps him make it, but it's, it's, uh, it ha, it has to make top pair, not the, not the best hand anymore, right?
Right, yeah. I was just quickly counting and. Miscounted two when there's three gaps in it.
So.
I think you're priced out here, man. I think you're priced out.
My question is here.
I think you're priced out out of position.
A seventy-five percent hot bet versus, against a, uh, short stack, a broken stack. I don't think you can.
So your, your pot odds are twenty-nine percent and you're seventeen percent with your eight outs.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think you're pressed up. Out of position. I think in position, the game changes, but. In position allow you a potential bluff on river and will allow you to realize equity. I think, I think you got to fold.
Yeah, so that's probably the better thing than that. And this, this is a terrible bluff card. It doesn't make any.
There's no, yeah, donking here would be interesting.
Yeah.
What are you bluffing with? So yeah, so I think on turn, I think, I think you're priced out. I think it's just, it's too big a bet, out of position. Now, if we knew we had top two, it might change, but.
Well. If we call the turn. How many times do we have to stack him to break even?
Uh, let's see. We're putting in four dollars. We're going to win. We're gonna win. We're gonna win.
We need to win about six times.
Yeah, and he's got that. Six times five, he's got that left. But we're out of position, so it's hard to get it.
Yeah. Do you want one of us to put this in solver and see where the threshold is to call?
Yeah, it'd be fun.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it.
Yeah, um, and if you have the broken stack solver.
Nah.
Well, he started.
Well, yeah. Actually, let me see if I can run post flop at forty.
Okay. That's not forty big blinds, it's. It's, uh, eighty big blinds.
Eighty big ones. Yes, we're not, we're not, it's not really a broken stack. It's eighty big ones. We're fine.
You can run this if you want. I don't mind. Do you want, would you prefer to run this?
Um, let me just see if. If I can run it at seventy-five. What position was he in?
Uh, he's cut off.
It doesn't give us the two point five option now with this stack.
And he's on three. He does a three, so.
Yeah, we don't, we won't be able to solve that.
Okay, let's, let's, let's make some, let's solve it with, with the other assumptions, having it take. You know, give it.
Would you prefer to solve or you want me to solve it? Joey?
I could solve. Cause I have it at seventy-five. And I wanna see if it'll work. Oh, I need you to stop sharing so I can.
Okay, I'm done.
Alright, so we see Queen ten off does have some three betting here, pre-flop.
Yep.
And what was the flop?
Flop is. What's wrong poker? The flop is here. It is. Uh, deuce of diamonds, king of diamonds, jack of spades. We have the queen of diamonds, ten of spades.
So we check and he bet. Small.
He bets one fifty-five, just under half pot. Uh, he bets half pot, probably with a rake. That's probably a rake.
Do they take the rake out? On each street, are you in? Hold a manager?
Yeah, until they, until they make, until they get to the max, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So Queen Jack, here's a call.
Yep.
Turn was what, three of hearts?
Yes. No, turn, it's the other way around. Turn of the eight. Turn is the eight of hearts. And then the river is the three of hearts.
Okay, here's the real ques- here's the real decision point, right? So what, what is our threshold to call? So he, he chooses to. Bet big, which he's allowed to do.
He wants seventy-five?
Yeah. So I think that is too much for us to call. And we are indifferent. We have Queen ten, right?
And yeah, we can do some folding.
We have Queen ten, so let's, let's look at Queen ten. Can we look at EB and stuff?
What suits do you have?
We have, uh. Diamond spade. Never folds. Diamond spade never.
We are entirely indifferent. That's what I read, right?
Not with diamond spade. Diamond spade likes to call.
Yeah, it's, this is close, man.
That's very close. That's practically just like no difference.
Can you filter for, um. Do we have any other straights? Yeah, can you filter first straights? Here. See what all the straights are doing.
We have no straight.
I'm sorry, straight draw, Mark. Could O E S D. So. We fold seventeen percent of the time, so ten nines are out. Ten nine is also into, uh, yeah, our straights are indifferent to the sizing. Can you play with sizing a little bit, Joey? Can you do a? B fifty and see if we call pure with all our O E, O E S Ds now? I think we call pure B fifty. No, we're still indifferent.
The ten nines are now calling pure.
Which is, I don't understand that. Maybe someone smarter than me can explain that, because I don't get that part. But, yeah.
Okay, because. The queen and ten are probably more. If we go back to his. Bluffing range, probably gonna be heavy with queens and tens.
Yeah, maybe the Broadway's are in there more, and, and that, yeah, I think so.
Actually, not.
Plus, when the eight. The queen ten. When the nine comes in, is a four liner and it's hard to get the money on a four liner.
Yeah, that might be it. That makes sense.
That counts as something.
So I think, I think, uh. Yeah, I think you're right on the edge. I mean, I would argue that if he nearly had two pair, let me ask you this. If you put his cards up. And made that bet, would you call? And he didn't know your cards.
Right.
What would you do then, Scotty? Would you, would you call his bet?
I would be more likely to call because then when I get it on the river, he's gonna call me.
Yeah, I think with the King Jack, it almost becomes.
Yeah. I, because then I know how to, then I know how to get all the money on the river.
Then you know that you.
So when we're talking about population. You gotta remember. This end. Might not look like this in population.
Right.
Which makes our, which makes. I think part of it that does have a little bit more equity. Is when he's playing with a lot of this end, because. If this end, if we hit a ten or a queen, we might still be able to pull it out.
Well, what about the argument that if he is? If this line is value heavy in population. Then when we hit one of our eight outs. We then. Are going to fully realize and get stacks. Without that argument, right? So this is always, if this line is. High freak. Top pair and two pair. Um. And sets. And we get there. Then we're gonna get full stacks.
Not always. If there's a lot of top pair.
Well, there's no always, but we're gonna get, we're gonna get highs, we're gonna get full stacks at a much higher frequency. If this is more. If this is more a value bet. And less. Less bluff.
Okay, but how much? The question we, we, nobody really answered yet, is how often do you have to stack him?
I think Scotty answered that.
If top pair hands. Are in there and we hit our straight with the ace. Which is half of our outs. We may not get. Like a king.
Yep, that's true.
Nine to call.
That's a valid argument.
And then the nine hitting. That will also scare quite a bit of the top pair hands.
Or especially if it's a, uh, ace of diamond or nine of diamond, right? If, 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 like, if it's offsuit, there's one thing, but if it's like nine of diamond or ace of diamond, yeah, you're gonna scare a lot of people.
Yeah, but they're not even clean outs for us.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It makes it worse. Like, you're really going, yeah, I, 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 I'm starting to think that. Yeah.
I, I think without this end. In. In the range. It might start leaning more towards a fold. I don't have the next level, the highest level, so I can't run AI. But my guess is without this bottom end. As robust as it is here. It might make our hand more of a fold.
Right.
Why would, why would him being? Uh, because. If we do hit a queen or ten, then we have. A winning hand. Is, is that the argument?
Yeah, if he's down this end, we might already be ahead.
Yeah, I see your point.
And if he just gives up on the river, we might show down and win like ten percent of the time.
Yeah. Yeah, I see your point.
If we. If this is, let's see. Pocket threes.
Well, pocket threes beat us if we don't hit it, if we don't hit it on the river.
Yeah, but if we hit a queen or ten.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And the ace nine that he's bluffing with, we need to hit the queen or ten. Does he have anything over there that the ace, that the queen ten is already ahead of? Anything? Anything to hope for? Nine, seven, yeah. Yeah, we loving it, loving it.
Ten, seven?
Yeah. He bets on the turn and then he gives up on the river. And we win queen high.
Queen nine. Ace nine, no, we're not beating that. So we are beating some of his range.
Yeah.
So if he has this lower range, we. We don't even have to hit with some of it.
Yep.
And with other parts of it, if we just hit the queen or ten, then we can win.
Yeah. Giving us four.
But if we take out this part, it's going to lo- lower our equity.
Yes.
Which I think shifts it to a fold.
Alright, uh, do we have time for a hand from me?
Yeah, I guess we could do one more.
Okay. Um. So. Here. You guys need to see my hand?
Yes.
Oh, Scotty. Are you done?
Am I what?
Are you done? Like, can I make you host now?
Oh, yeah, you can make me host, sure.
So you can.
Yeah. No reason not to.
It's the way you can close out and close the.
Yep, yep, I can do that.
Alright, go ahead.
Alright, so, um. Playing nine handed. Have a limp. We ISO to five. So at this table, I increased my ISO size because. People just wanted to see flops, so. Four and a half was just generating. Flats behind, which we see here. Multiway. Good hand. Uh, we can't check here, I think, in the middle of the sandwich. I chose to bet. Are you, what's your, um?
Theory says we should check.
Yeah, so I think checking is fine.
Mostly check.
This hand is. So good with redraws as well.
Yeah.
What do you think, Scotty?
I was, I was thinking that. It's. If, if betting here is a mistake, it's a small mistake. Um, and the. Checking here requires, uh, player sixty-four, seventy-five to be betting. In the black seat. More often than he's going to. Cause check here, you wanna check raise. That's what you're doing it for. So. I do not hate the bet.
Not necessarily.
You don't wanna check raise to, to, you don't wanna check raise?
You just have to remember that one pair is not that strong of a hand in a three-way pot.
That's true.
Well, you're gonna hate this play.
Overpair.
Yep, okay.
So we're either gonna bet or check call.
Right, alright.
Yeah, uh, that makes sense. Bet, small, check call.
So we bet. And then he pots. So the. The button pots.
Yeah.
Uh, folds the initial player. What are you guys doing?
Please fold, please fold.
And I, I'm sorry to disappoint you. So what, uh? Do you think, do you think he ever has draws here?
I think he has draws and even, even top pairs here, top pair. Ace Jack here. And now he doesn't have to be, it's Jack of Spades.
So we've got, we've got two backdoor redraws. Yeah. So.
Oh, fold here.
I'm, I don't. So. Is folding. A winning play here? I'm not sure.
No.
You, you bet in a multi-way pot. On a ten jack board. And get raised. He raised into two other players.
Yep, he did.
Those things are true, however, we've got.
That is a very strong play.
It is.
Yes.
It is a strong play.
And yes, you could still be ahead. But even the hand you're ahead has. Equity against your hand.
They do.
Well, are we gonna fold just because someone's got equity to the nuts with a good draw?
I don't think we are folding. I don't think you can fold here.
Cards right now.
I could. I could be drawing with two cards.
Could be.
Folding seems. I, I mean, people will fold here sometimes. It's just there's no flush in those straight yet. There's sets, there's two pairs. Um, but there's no.
Eh, but I'm not doing it.
There's no folder, there's no flush or straight available. So.
But it was a three-way pot. One pair of hands don't win three-way pots very often. When they're contested.
And this pot is contested.
Yep, and also what, what's a read on the, on the button? Like, do, have you, how often you play them, like, do you case?
Yeah, that's the unfortunate thing about, about global poker.
All, you don't. It's all random, yeah.
They're anonymized. Anonymized, so I don't really remember this hand.
Right.
Um, so. Yeah. I can see folding to some turns. But. Number one, this imposition raise is unusual, right? You really shouldn't be doing this. Very often. And let's. Maybe as a. Group with guys are still engaged. You know. What are you raising imposition? I mean, imposition raises are rare.
Yeah, and I think you having the king of spades plays a big part, cause they're, like, they're only bluffs. I could see. Uh, one of their only, like, king, queen of spades, things like this. And you, you, you're blocking that.
Yeah, I mean, so king, queen of spades. If he could have it. Was all, I mean, like, so that.
Yeah. So like, that reduces his.
So the nine eight of spades has like fifty-five percent equity.
Yeah.
Um. And I. I mean, it, it. Uh, yeah, I just feel like. I think we have. I think calling here is tough, because we call here. The pot is, right now it's forty. If I call, the pot is fifty. And so SPR is at. One point three. One point four, about one point four, right? Do you think that, what's the preferred pla- play for you guys? Is it call?
Yep.
I'm calling.
I'm calling.
Okay. Well, I would, I, I might have been drinking this night.
I've, I'm folding. Because I've played long enough to know that this isn't any good.
Yep, okay.
You're, you're gonna be okay. You're gonna be good once in a while. But the problem. Problem is. What happens on a two of. Clubs. Turn and then he. Bets out pot again.
Oh. But I mean, so you've got, you've gotta discount any bluffs from playing this way. Right? You've gotta give him no bluffs. I mean, this is a draw-heavy board. You've gotta give him. No spade draws and you gotta give him no, no straight draws. You gotta give him no combo draw.
Exactly, like, I would, I agree, like, to be like, he could do this with a hand like nine, eight.[1661.22] Exactly. Like, I would agree. Like, to be like, he could do this with a hand like nine, eight, like, no, no, no spade. Like, or, or ninety-one spade. Like, I mean, there's just too many. This is a mo- a semi-connected. Like, I don't know that. I don't think I can fold this. I wanna see if, I, I would wanna see if a turn card.
Okay, I guess, I guess it's different, cause I've seen hundreds of. Multiway solvers, but. I don't. When there's an action like this, I don't play one pair of hands in a multiway pot.
I can, well, it's not multiway anymore.
But it's a one, it's a one where I can improve. It's not like. You know. We can still catch a straight. We can catch a flush on the board. It's not like we're gonna get stuck. I just, you know.
You know the, do you have to, you know the odds of runner, runner for a flush or a straight? It's about one percent.
We all, yes, we all know it.
One percent?
A runner, runner from backdoor, three percent.
Oh.
Um, so.
Don't tell me if you jammed.
No.
Whatever, whatever you do.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Cause you just. Larry, Larry, don't, don't.
That's a Matt-approved play.
Larry, don't tell me you jammed, please.
I, I was inspired by Matthew.
Do it.
Oh. We're razzing.
Nice.
We're razzing Matt here and he's not even here.
I know, yeah. So solver will play this way, make this play at a low frequency when presented with this kind of aggression.
In a multiway pot?
This is a multiway at this point, my friend.
Right, but it doesn't, that change, no, it doesn't matter.
He bet into two players.
Multiway for this. Yeah, true. But, okay, fair enough. And heads up, solver will make this play at some, slow, low frequency. I rolled, I rolled a nine, uh, I said I was gonna shove, I was gonna call. Ninety percent and shove ten percent. I rolled a ninety-three.
Alright. Let's see if you survive.
And, yeah, he doesn't hit. So. Ah, yeah, I, I could, I, I'm trying to get my head around folding. I can't, I can't fold on flop when there's not. Um, the nuts available. Now, let's say that. The. Uh. Let's say, he would have, he would have gotten me to fold on turn. Because I would have given him some frequency of nine, eight. And so if he shoved on turn, I would have. But, um, yeah. This, this is how I chose to play, is cause I, I rolled a low-frequency play. And on the flop, you were, he had thirteen outs, right? So. Well, it's his. So you're. Yeah, you're probably done.
Well, like twelve.
You're better at outs than me. Cause you're our limit guy. Yeah, let's see if it does, does it tell him, uh, his pot odds on this replayer? No. No, okay, never mind then. Yeah, we don't get it. So, um, yeah, alright.
Wait, um. He's got.
There you go. That, that, as I say, yeah, like, it'll make sense, land jack of spades. Yeah.
Yeah. He's got two jacks and eleven, so he's got like thirteen outs. You're right. He's got two jacks. And we don't, we don't discount mine.
Two jacks, three nines and all the spades.
Yeah, eight, eight more spades.
Fourteen outs.
Fourteen.
Sounds so.
We have a spade. Joey.
Hey, right, since you have a spade, you discount a spade, right? Meaning eight.
Thirteen outs.
Yeah.
And we have a redraw if the spade comes on the turn.
Okay.
Yeah, so my low-frequency maniac play worked out. Yep.
Nice.
But we did say that solver will occasionally make that jam, right? Like, it's not like a never-done thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could look at it if you guys want and ask.
Yes, please. I wanna see that. I wanna see solver for that spot.
And a heads up, and a heads up pot, but I think, um. A heads-up solver solution is. Not really going to give us the same answer that a three-way solver would.
Yeah, I mean, the, the important thing here is that the, that if this had been a heads-up pot, there would be almost no conversation about. Whether, about folding on that raise. Um, and Joey's whole point is that it's in a, that it's a three-way pot, so that the solver. Is, is not gonna discuss that part.
Oh, right, I see, I see. We were talking about, um. DTO is about, um, thirty bucks a month. We were talking about sparging and getting that for one month. And look at multi-way stuff during that month.
Yep. Starting next.
Right to, uh, get it for a month and see how it goes.
I'm just paying for it. I got, I'll chip in. Alright, so this is, this is scuffed because we don't have any. This is a pure checkboard. So we can't run this all. Okay. Alright.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know it's a pure checkboard.
I'm, well. You've been playing for a long time, so. Yeah, okay.
Uh, uh, by the way, when. When, uh, you guys wanna start. Uh, getting that, that subscription next week or, or still, still talking about it?
Um, can we hang on until March? Cause I paid for. Um, GTO Wizard for all of February. So I think we should use out, um.